Eric Sun should not be given that position as city manager. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. City Attorney, do you want to opine on that or wait until we come out of close?
No, I'm happy to do that. Right now, the FPBC has actually issued an opinion that's right on point. It was issued to Steve Ekkis, E-C-K-I-S, that says that when someone's proffered terms of employment, and they're a public employee, they have the ability to negotiate on their own behalf vis-a-vis the agency. So there's FPBC advice clearly on point that controls the situation. Mr. Sun, through this process, has separated himself from making any advice to the council in his official capacity to make sure he falls within the parameters of that opinion. There was another issue raised. So anyway, there is an opinion on the issue and there's no conflict of interest. Oh, there is no offer and acceptance here. Under the California Government Code, it's not possible for there to be a binding contract outside of a public meeting off consent. And so, yes, the council's ad hoc has discussed terms with Mr. Sun. Those have been advanced to the agenda, but there is no offer and no acceptance in this context. And that's been clear to the council and clear to the candidate.
Okay.
I have a question, Mayor Ward of the city attorney. As city attorney, but we did have participation by Mr. Sun in the process. Okay, he did participate in the process in terms of sitting on a panel interviewing candidates. I objected to that, but he did. So does that not disqualify him automatically by taking him out of the process and interviewing candidates that council selected to be interviewed?
The council and Councilmember Ferguson, that process in which she participated played out and concluded before it was reopened and he became involved as a candidate. So there was a clear segue in my mind between that recruitment and the contract before.
What was reopened, Scott? We didn't reopen the advertisement for the position.
City Attorney, I have an issue talking about recruitment.
Mayor Ward, stop interrupting me. I'm going to tell you that at the beginning of the meeting. It's against policy and I can read the policy, okay? If you want to hear it again or if you need a refresher. But you say you have the most experience of all of us, but you don't seem to know the rules. So let me ask the attorney a question and I'd like an answer because...
Ferguson, we have a point of order. Can you just stop talking for a moment, please?
And then I want my question answered.
I was actually speaking and you interrupted me.
I did not.
In the city, I think the record will show that you did. So Scott, can you opine? Because I am concerned, I do not want to get into talking about any of the recruitment in public. That was a closed session item. And I'm concerned about that being debated here when the full council knows everything that happened in closed session because we were the participants in that closed session. And I don't believe we're waiving privilege on that.
Yeah, the conversation and the segue did occur in closed session and it did occur with me present. And so we need the council to waive privilege on that before I felt...
Well, good cover for you, Scott.
Okay, so counsel, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved. Oh, Mayor, if I could, there is some housekeeping before we go. Just two quick announcements. There is a link under C regarding a threat of litigation by Cypress Shores. That link belongs under D. It just needs to be disclosed before you go into closed session, but it corresponds to D, not C. C involves initiation of litigation. One of the potential defendants is TCA with regard to its continued collection of development impact fees. So we need to tell that potential defendant that item C relates to them. So with that, all disclosures that are appropriate tonight have been made.
All right, so Madam, quickly, we have a motion by Mayor Potem James and a second by Councilmember Noblock to go into closed session. Public comment is closed.
Councilmember Duncan on the second.
Did I say Noblock? I did, I'm so sorry.
I'm Steve for the night.
Yep, I'm so sorry. I was looking at...
Yeah, no problem.
The audience.
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Aye.
Mayor Potem James?
Aye.
Mayor Ward?
Aye.
Carrie's 4-0.
Thank you.
Right for Councilmember Duncan before we, we start. All right, so I'm seeing that all council is present with the exception of Councilmember No Block and I am calling the business meeting to order.
First item on the agenda is Pledge of Legions.
Councilmember Duncan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Councilmember Duncan.
Here.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim James.
Here.
Mayor Ward.
Present.
And Councilmember No Block is absent. First item on the agenda is a toll road update.
Okay, I didn't prepare one. Mr. Sun, is there anyone that we want to give or just not have any update this time?
I know there's other, might be some other council member comments, but I'll give a brief update as it relates to Senate Bill 760 that went through the transportation, Senate Transportation Committee last week. I'm happy to say that the bill passed and got out of committee. I want to thank Senator Bates and also Mayor Kathy Ward and our Mayor Pro Tim Jean James and also Councilmember Duncan for assisting. That's supportive of that SB 760. So that's a really good first step for the city of San Clemente as it relates to ensuring protection for the city of San Clemente again. Future toll road expansion. That bill's next stop will be the Appropriations Committee. A date hasn't been set. However, when we get more information, we'll communicate to the public the update and what they can do to help support the city of San Clemente with that bill as it moves to the Senate floor.
All right, thank you. That's the only update. All right, thank you. That's the only update I have then.
May Mayor Ward, I have a question of interim city manager Sun. I'm in terms of the manager, Sun, thank you, Mayor. I noticed that toll road information page still doesn't have all the updated letters. I know it seemed to ask for many, many months to have that updated, but still the most recent letters from even last year aren't included, other than just the 760, 761 Senate bills.
Councilmember Director Wong slash Mayor of the city of Yorba Linda said, "Thank you, Councilwoman. It was an unfortunate vote." Mayor Wong, I would say unfortunate for you, very fortunate for the citizens of San Clemente. Mayor Will O'Neill copied, blind copied Councilmember Ferguson complaining about me. I'm not going to get into the details of that, but be more than willing to share what I had said and this is, we're negotiating in good faith with the TCA. Have no doubt. People in this audience, people watching at home should know, we're going to withdraw from that rogue organization. But we're going to deal with them and negotiate in good faith and not do weasel deals like going behind their backs and communicating with others. This was totally inappropriate. This is something we'll bring up at the next TCA meeting. Mr. Johnson, I know you're watching. Be aware that this was inappropriate to Mayor O'Neill from Newport Beach, blind copying Ms. Ferguson was totally inappropriate, and to Mayor Wong of Yorba Linda. Communicating directly with Councilmember Ferguson was totally inappropriate. Mr. City Attorney, what is your view, particularly with Samuel Johnson, CEO of the TCA, communicating behind the backs of the two directors that are San Clemente representatives?
Well, Mayor and Council, I don't. I don't know if there are legal ramifications about that. Anyone, including Mr. Johnson, would want to be careful not to communicate with three members of this council about something. And so that would be the legal risk that I might foresee. The the structure of this communication, whether it implicated three members, I don't know. But that would be something that that you and he could could take up together and just confirm that that there aren't three of you involved in communications with him offline about the same topic.
Right. So that's all I have. Very disappointing on the part of the TCA communicating with Councilmember Ferguson. You know. It was up to her if, I don't think the onus was on her. Her initial note to them was, "Hello, to clarify the accuracy of the San Clemente State's action stated in Mayor Ward's letter, the vote was four one with Ferguson descending." I have no problem with that, I guess. Disappointing. But I think Mr. Mr. Johnson has a higher duty to treat us in a fair and equitable manner. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Mayor.
And to be fair, that vote was the vote for the city to withdraw from the TCA, was it not?
That was.
Right.
So it's it's interesting to have one of our councilmembers. That was an unfortunate vote.
Yeah, it's too bad. Yeah, you didn't do that years ago. I mean, all these things are a little little late to be doing, especially the DIFs, you know. I mean, we're hardly paying anything anymore. That should have been thought of five, six years ago. But I have a question of Mayor Potem James. I'm really curious, how did you, are you reading my emails? How did you receive these emails? Did someone send them to you from IT or did Mr. Sun, how did you receive the emails?
I did, I'm more than happy to answer. I did a public record request.
Okay.
Yes, San Clemente, the city of Newport Beach.
Okay, I missed that one. Okay, I've been very, very busy. Also, I'm an alternate on the toll road, TCA, so I am an alternate, and really government officials and officials of any kind of government or JPA, they can they can talk to whomever they want. You know, there's no restriction other than, as the city attorney alluded to, in the event of being very, very careful of a Brown Act violation. So other than that, they're welcome to contact me and write me, and I can do the same. You know, that's that's their First Amendment rights to do so.
Listen, I'm totally aware of your affinity for the TCA.
It's a little uncalled for and unfair. I don't want a toll road through town, Jean. I don't think anyone in San Clemente in their right minds do, so.
That's all I have.
Well, on that note, I do want to thank the citizens of San Clemente who participated in the in the Senate Transportation Committee hearing that interim city manager Sun spoke of. We had a number of people call in and a lot more people write letters, and it really did make the difference. So thank you for doing that.
And if I may say, Councilmember Duncan, we're calling him Councilmember Noblock tonight for some reason. Councilmember Duncan did yeoman's work in contacting the senators in Sacramento. And 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 I would have to say that thirteen to one vote and I think three abstentions, we owe Councilmember Duncan a big round of applause. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
Yes, the next item on the agenda is an update on homeless issues, and we do have two speaker cards.
Okay. And before we get started on speakers, when you come up to the podium, you can remove your mask. I was going to say that during oral communications, but definitely, you know, you can do that at this time when you come up to speak.
The first speaker is Donna the Dream.
Good evening. Your business community is asking for the support of city council and leadership in addressing the homeless living and sleeping on the streets in San Clemente. I received a call from a business owner today reaching out for help with a homeless person interfering with their clientele. This has been a reoccurring and frequent problem with this business. I will not identify this business tonight, but I will email the concern and the plea for help to all five council members, the city manager and city clerk. There are many concerns and complaints voiced by the business community. Inaction is not the solution. We cannot ignore nor power wash the problem away. Let's look for real and compassionate solutions. You opened the city council meeting with prayer, not tonight, but one major theme repeated throughout the Bible is God's care for the poor. There are many verses in the Bible about our response and responsibility to the poor that remind us of our call to love our neighbors as ourselves and serve the least of these with mercy and justice. The city needs a plan to address the San Clemente homeless. You as our elected leaders are morally and ethically responsible. A plan might include provide overnight shelter or shelter options, meet the toileting and hygiene needs of San Clemente unhoused, safe parking for people living and sleeping in their cars overnight, work with the county to access county and state funds and programs for our San Clemente homeless, a day office for homeless outreach services and case management, prayerfully with responsible action. Donna the Dream.
Next comment is from Pastor Julie Patton, Christ Lutheran Church.
I am reading comments from Pastor Julie Patton. She is a she is doing a Bible study tonight at our church, and I have a card here that gives permission for her comments to be read.
Point of order.
Yes.
Is this appropriate?
Scott, do we allow someone to read something for someone else?
I think in the past where the person did give written comments, we've allowed those to be read as by their proxy.
Donna, I just wanted to make sure that it was appropriate.
Oh, sure. I checked before, and the card is there with Pastor Julie Patton's permissions.
Okay, so go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'm speaking for Julie Patton. My name is Julie Patton. I am a new resident of San Clemente and the new pastor of Christ Lutheran Church. In my role as pastor, I have had the opportunity to participate in our Sunday morning beach church at eight AM. We are often joined by houseless individuals from the area. Many may not see homelessness as a concern in this community. I believe the houseless individuals are a hidden group. They try to stay out of sight and keep to themselves. There are not adequate resources for them to live a quality life without help and assistance. Many churches in the area try to do what they can to help this community with food, clothing, and personal connections. I feel that the city council needs to address how we respond to these individuals in our community with dignity and respect. Thank you for your time.
Next item is presentation of proclamation.
Oh, I have one update I wanted to give. I'm sorry.
Apologies.
It's okay. Counsel, I just wanted to give a quick update as previous direction from the city council. Mercy House is now providing street outreach and engagement services to the homeless within the city. They've assigned two caseworkers who will work together as a team to provide the city with twenty hours of homeless outreach per week. The current schedule of outreach is for three hours on Tuesdays and Wednesdays and four hours on Fridays. These dates will change based on needs, but they started on Monday doing their outreach service outreach services. And so as appropriate, we'll provide updates to the council, but I wanted to let engage Mercy House under the $25,000 city manager authority, and they started this week.
All right, thank you very much.
Just one quick question, Mayor Ward.
Yes.
And will Mercy House be be able to be engaged until we bring on our full-time homeless coordinator?
We have enough funding to get them through three months of outreach services if necessary. I will provide just an update that this week was the final round of interviews for that position, community service outreach worker. So I anticipate a decision will be made relatively soon from an offer standpoint. Thank you.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Yes, next item on the agenda is presentation of a proclamation for older Americans.
Okay, so this is some of the fun stuff that we get to do as as mayor. We are designating May, amongst other things, as Older Americans Month. And we have a proclamation that says, whereas San Clemente includes countless older Americans who enrich and strengthen our community, and whereas AgeWell Senior Services is committed to engaging and supporting older adults, their families, and caregivers, and whereas we acknowledge the importance of taking part in activities that promote physical, mental, and emotional well-being, no matter your age, and whereas Dorothy Visser Senior Center can enrich the lives of individuals of every age by promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, involving older adults in community planning, events, and other activities, and providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, lead, and mentor. Now, therefore, I, Kathy Ward, Mayor of the city of San Clemente, acting on behalf of the city council and the citizens of San Clemente, to hereby proclaim the month of May as Older Americans Month, and we urge every resident to take time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as vital parts of our community.
And the next item is presentation of proclamation for Bike Month.
Okay. Whereas the bicycle is an economical, healthy, convenient, and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent tool for recreation and enjoyment of San Clemente scenic beauty, and whereas bicycling has many benefits, including promoting personal health while simultaneously helping to conserve energy, improve air quality, reduce traffic congestion, and ease parking demands, and whereas San Clemente's road and trail system attracts bicyclists each year, providing economic health, transportation, and tourism, and whereas creating a bicycle-friendly community has shown to improve citizens' well-being and quality of life, grow the economy of San Clemente by attracting tourism dollars and improving traffic safety, supporting student learning outcomes, and reducing pollution, congestion, and wear and tear on our streets and our roads, and whereas the city of San Clemente Beaches Parks and Recreation Department and the Orange County Sheriff's Department will be promoting safe bicycling during this month of May 2021. Now, therefore, I, Kathy Ward, Mayor of the city of San Clemente, California, acting on behalf of the city council and citizens of San Clemente, to hereby proclaim the month of May 2021 as also to be Bike Month in the city of San Clemente, and by doing so, we encourage citizens to pick up their helmets instead of their car keys and ride their bicycles to the Bike Safety Rodeo that is going to be held on May 26, 2021, at Visser and Moses Sports Park to benefit their health, safety, and environment. And I would tell the council that I guess it is an economic driver to have people come to work in the city of San Clemente because of our bike trails. We get a lot of engineers and people working for businesses in the Rancho San Clemente Business Park in Toledo, and on on their breaks and lunch, they they ride our trails. And so we've been able to attract attract people that may have worked in Irvine, but they like to come down here, and it's because of our bike trail system. So thank you very much.
I get it. Yeah.
It's definitely an advantage, and we want to encourage the public to please go to this rodeo. We do see a lot of increase in electric bikes. I'm seeing many of our students riding on Pico to go to the high school, and it's incumbent on everyone to learn bicycle safety, but I think it's also incumbent on all of our drivers to recognize that our streets are multimodal and that we have to be very careful that that, you know, we look out for bicyclists also, but while they're obeying the traffic rules also. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, I have, I'd like to make a couple of motions in regards to the schedule tonight.
Yes.
First motion is in regards to nine C. Councilmember Noblock and I presented that. He's not here today, so I would be, I would remove that from the agenda this evening, if I may.
Right.
And then, do I need to make a motion? Do we need to vote on that?
Um, I think we should.
Do we need to vote on that?
Yes, I would like to check with the city attorney, though. I have about thirty, thirty-five comments from the prior time when it was on the agenda before we before the policy changed and we opened up the meeting to the public.
Oh, and there's not speakers tonight?
No speakers, but I do have those carryover.
Yeah, I think those can be transmitted to the council, which I think they already have been, so that they receive that mail. And then tonight, we're talking about live comments only.
Even though they were received before the policy?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if I can make a motion to.
I understand there's one speaker. We actually have two speakers.
So if we have speakers, Madam Clerk, if it's something that we want to remove from the agenda, would we just notify those speakers that it's been removed from the agenda?
You're removing it from the agenda or you're moving this forward?
Moving it forward.
To a date certain?
I believe in, I believe in the past you've asked if people can come back.
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
And if they can't. I'm not sure that that's something you have to do, but I think that that's that has been done before.
So these two speakers, are they not in this room? They're in another room?
I think they're here. One is Erin, no last name, and the other is Fiona Carroll.
So Mayor Potem, would you, knowing that we're probably going to remove it, would you allow public comment?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I'll second that motion and ask for a vote, a roll call vote on that, removing it to next meeting? Or I'm sorry, continuing it?
Okay, Councilmember Duncan.
This is continuing it and allowing speakers who are present to get.
Yeah, absolutely.
I.
Councilmember Ferguson.
I.
Mayor Potem James.
I.
Mayor Ward.
I.
And Councilmember Noblock is absent, so that passes four zero.
And.
Okay, and the second one?
I have another motion, and that is item nine H, I believe.
You would like to move that.
I'd like to move item nine H to the front of the agenda right after Oral Comments Part One. Well, no, after the city attorney's closed session report, so before the consent calendar.
Okay, Madam Clerk, is it is it okay to move that before the consent calendar?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Okay, I'll, I'll second that motion.
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem James?
Aye.
Mayor Ward?
Aye.
And Councilmember Noblock is absent, that carries 4-0.
Um, excuse me, Mayor Ward, I have, since we're making some announcements and requests at the moment, I'm making an announcement that I'm recusing myself from item A8A, 8A. And I won't be participating in that. Had I participated, I would have voted no, because I see that as a gift to public funds. So I will not be participating in that item tonight, thank you.
Which item was that? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Councilmember Ferguson?
8A?
How is it that you're not participating in it when you are present at the meeting?
Yep, I will not be, I can recuse myself. I own the recusal as an elected official for the reasons I've stated, and I have others.
Okay, well, I think you should wait till we get to 8A, we're moving around.
No, 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 I've done it, okay? I've recused it, you know the rules, and I've recused myself from that item thing.
You're present at the council meeting.
Recuse myself from items, you know that, so end of subject.
And when we get to that item, you can state what your recusal is, but we're not on that item at this point.
I will repeat myself again if you would like me to, Mayor Ward, thank you.
That, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Uh, next item is oral communications, part one. We do not have any cards, however. So, next item is motion to waive reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances.
Is there a motion?
So move, second.
Second by Councilmember Duncan.
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem James?
Aye.
Mayor Ward?
Aye.
Carries 4-0. Are there any items to agendize that require immediate action?
I see no indication.
Closed session report, city attorney.
Uh, thanks, Mayor and Councilman. Uh, the council did take one item of reportable action in closed session. It, uh, in, uh, let's see, sorry, item D. There was a, a risk of a threat of litigation from Cypress Shores Homeowners Association that I mentioned earlier. In that, in that matter, the council voted 4-0 to approve a one-year tolling agreement with the potential claimant. The motion was made by Mayor Ward, seconded by Council, Mayor Protem James, and that's it tonight.
Okay, thank you.
It's time we're moving to item 9H.
And if I could make a motion, Madam Mayor, on 9H, and I'll need some advice from the city attorney on this. There's a lot of questions about 9H and I think we need to talk, talk about it. And the interest of transparency, I would, I would ask my colleagues, I will make a motion to waive the privilege of the deliberations. Those, sans any, any name or where that candidate was from. But I think we, I would like to waive that privilege of being able to talk about the deliberations and how we got to this place today, this evening.
Uh, I would just ask the city attorney to opine on that and, and give us any safeguards that we need. Because I, I want to make sure that we preserve what we need to, that is confidential.
Thanks, Mayor and Council for the chance to respond to that. I think it goes without saying that the identity or even allusions to the identity or the qualifications of candidates is something that is protected by their privacy right, regardless of whether you decide to waive privilege. If the council waives privilege on this, it would be a limited waiver, limited only to the things that you might say tonight and not on the entire course of dealing or the entire recruitment, just the things that you might want to disclose tonight. I would caution you about making any statements that could be perceived as an admission of, of wrongdoing or of lapses in the process. But, but I, I don't anticipate that that's what you would, would do or what Mayor Protem James has in mind. So I would be careful about the privacy interests and about alluding to any kind of legal theory that an unsuccessful applicant might have. But if you think you can do that, then it, it's up to the council to vote and decide whether you want to waive privilege, at least in a limited way that I, that I described.
So Mayor Protem, could you give a little more information of, of why you want to do that? I'm just concerned what might be brought up tonight.
I'm not even sure what I want to talk about requires a waiver of privilege. I would like to talk about the number of candidates, our process in, in, in closed session. The, how we got, how, how we got to, to, to this decision. Certainly not names of, of candidates or any type of profile of that candidate or what candidate was good, what candidate was bad, not looking to do that. I would like be able to have some latitude on discussing the process.
So I would look to my right, to Councilmember Duncan. Any comments?
Uh, I'm hesitant to open the door to the process, because I, I feel very strongly that we need to have the comfort when we're going through the process and discussing things that it's not going to leave the room. And I'm also, you know, I, I take to heart the, the city attorney's comments about admissions because, and as an attorney myself, I know it's sometimes you're not intending to make an admission and you do. And we, we open the door to that slightly, so I'm on the fence at this point.
Councilmember Ferguson?
I'm fine, I'm fine, I'm for that.
So Mayor Protem, I, I think I share that. I, I think anything that we talk to, we might think it's innocuous, but it just leads to further issues or questions. And I really, I have concerns with that. Could, can we do it without, with, without those details? Because, you know, the council met in closed session, those were all duly noticed meetings.
You know, what I like.
Many times.
What I like about this conversation is I, I think we're, we're each coming at it from, from a, not a self-serving position, but I think, I think our, our objectives are noble here. I, I want to be able to tell the public as much as I can. But again, I appreciate the fact that we could very possibly set a precedent on, on waiving our. So with that, I, I guess I would move for a vote. I'll make, I'll make the motion and if someone would second it, we, if we could have a vote.
Okay. Is there any second to that motion?
Yes, I'll second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Duncan?
No.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem James?
Aye.
Mayor Ward?
No.
Motion fails, 2 to 2.
So it's just for, it's a concern, Mayor Protem?
No, I, I do it.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could, there's some housekeeping, maybe this is a good point that, that needs to be presented on this. Are you ready for that?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thanks a lot, just, there are certain strictures on making an offer of employment or compensation to a senior executive in a public agency. And, and some of those have to do with action taken that led you to presentation of this agenda item. And so I could, with that, previously, the city council voted in closed session to extend an offer of employment to Eric Sun. That motion was made by Mayor Protem James and seconded by Councilmember Duncan. It carried 3 to 2 with council members, Noblock and Ferguson voting no. Subsequent to that, the council voted to give bargaining authority to its ad hoc committee. That was the mayor and the mayor pro tem. That motion was, I'm sorry. Passed. There, the authority given to the ad hoc to present and bring back terms was made by James, seconded by Duncan, it carried 3-2 with Noblock and Ferguson voting no. The ad hoc then reached proposed terms and then authorized presentation of the agreement before you. The government code also requires that the high points of those, of the proposed contract be presented orally. And so I, I do that and taking just a minute, please, the, the key term, at least the monetary term, is in section 5A, that relates to base compensation, which is set at $249,117.24. There is a benefits package that's provided, public employee retirement that's provided. But those in this contract coincide with what's provided for city employees generally. There's a life insurance policy provided $250,000 and cellphone allowance, I'm sorry, automobile allowance of $450. So those are the key monetary terms that we need to summarize orally off consent, which I've done. Last but not least, Eric is present, he's not able to advise you as your acting manager, whether to enter into this agreement, obviously. So his participation here would be as the potential candidate and not as your advisor. Government Code, section 1090 prohibits him performing both roles. And that's in fact why you've set this up as you have to date with the council ad hoc working and the recruiter working in advisory capacity of the council. So thank you for that, those, those check offs, I think we've got them all.
Okay, so how does council want to do this? Do you want to take public comment first?
Please.
All right, Madam Clerk?
I don't think we have any comments on this one. 9H? No.
Just make sure, okay. So on this, I would, I just say, okay, that deliberations on that are closed and we're going to go to council then. I'll go ahead and start this as, as the mayor. Mayor Protem, James and I were an ad hoc to the city council. And, and basically what we did on that is we just helped with the schedule and we were the liaison with the recruiter, but all deliberations and everything were with the city council. I'm very pleased that we have landed that we are promoting Eric Sun to city manager. I think we chose a proven, known person that we know that knows the issues of San Clemente and well, and our staff. And we feel that that was the best person to go forward with. So those are, those are my comments for now. But go ahead, Councilmember Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor Ward. This follows on Mayor Protem James's, you know, vote a moment ago. But this was a, a long and difficult process. And we certainly had our challenges along the way. It didn't proceed, at least as I had planned. But I think we end up here with a, with, with a proven tactical manager who knows the city, knows the issues. We need that kind of stability, I think, at this point. We've been looking, you know, we've been going through this process for quite a while. We head into the budget season in particular, I think we need our point person there to, you know, to guide us through. And I think Eric is the person to do that. Now, my sense is that there's, that Eric has diverse support amongst many areas and I'm very attuned to that. And I think that, that, that does say, say a lot. So while the, the process has been difficult, I feel good about where we are.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
I can say that I did more due diligence on this than any hiring decision I've ever made in the private sector, in the nonprofit world. The past few days, I have gone through every employee exit interview form. I found two references to Mr. Sun. And that is all. What I found was a workforce that was departing that seemed to be very pleased with, with the city. For example, when I, when I look at the attrition rate over the, over the time that Mr. Sun has been in position versus assistant now as interim. The attrition rate since 2013 is about 8%. You can look at any organization and find an attrition rate of 8% or higher. So I, I really feel that our attrition rate was not high. And then, when you, when you peel the onion back even further, what you find is you find a number of promotions. I found 20 promotions. I found 30 people who left for personal reasons that include distance. They found a, a, a job closer to home, their own health, their own health, pregnancy, and childcare issues. And there were several exit interviews in which there were laudatory comments of Mr. Sun. As, as we look at the, at the, Mr. City Attorney, the, the, the claims we looked at this evening were public record, were they not?
They, not entirely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I give a number?
Yes, oh yeah.
There have been two, just two legal actions, lawsuits, claims, whatever you want to call them, in which Mr. Sun was named in an organization of 200 people over now what is eight years. That is not an extraordinary number. We can get into, you know, one of those claims was, was settled for, for a large number. And unfortunately, the way our insurance plan is set, our program is set up. Our insurance company pays at the first dollar, so they have total control over the claim. That is probably something we need to look at going, going into the future, both from a cost perspective and for the ability for us to have some influence on those claims. I've asked people. I've had people from the business community come to me and say they really appreciate the work that Eric has done. And what I'm going to say, my personal experience, since we put Eric in position, which I believe was about the 1st of July last year, I have dealt with a extraordinarily competent professional, someone who's been dedicated, someone who I feel, and by my observations, has shown an incredible amount of empathy towards his employees or the city's employees in which he, he was in charge of over this time. I am enthusiastically voting this evening for Eric Sun. And I ask everyone on this council to come together and support Eric Sun. This is, this is our fiduciary responsibility. Let's not go on, let's not go on social media and attack people. Let's not go on social media and attack our employees. Let's support our employees. Let's call, let's, you know, as a manager, as a leader, you give laudatory comments in public, you give criticism in private. And I ask that that criticism from. And I ask that that criticism from this point on be in private. Mr. Sun is not perfect. God knows I'm not perfect. And I would just ask for the city to come together and gel behind the city manager. That's my comment. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Ferguson.
Thanks, Mayor Ward. Well, I've been trying to take some notes of Mr. Duncan and Mr. James's comments. So I've been on council two and a half years. It's very obvious I haven't been pleased with the performance of the management in the two and a half years in which Mr. Sun's been here. But I have a question. Let me start with them and Mayor Protem James. Okay, so if the city manager is the best organization, why, why did we go through this for so long? Why did we take so much time? Six special meetings, right? Closed sessions.
To answer that question?
I just, Mayor Ward, I just wanted to ask them, just any clarification on their choice of the most important role of this organization?
And he's going to answer you right now.
Going to answer.
Thank you.
A year ago, I voted with you to move this process along. We, we deadlocked two two. Then we got to, to within about sixty days of the election. And there was no way we were going to be able to hire a city manager going into election, particularly with a fractured council that, that we had. At, at that point, we come out of the election season and we go into COVID. And, and then we were hamstrung by COVID. So then we get, you know, we, we get into the process that we have had over the past, I think ninety days, probably.
Oh, actually, it's longer. I think we started in earnestly in January.
Right. So that's my response to you, Councilmember.
Okay, so I guess what I was asking about the performance, not so much all these variables that had occurred, but so great for the organization. So you approve of the performance during the COVID with all of the actions that were taken. And we're still closed to the audience, to the public when all cities around us are open. So I'm just looking for what's the greatness that you're, that you had stated.
Mayor Protem, are you willing to take questions at this time and provide answers?
Don't need to. I'm just, then I'll make my comments. I did have one for Councilmember Duncan too, please, before I comment.
Same question.
I saw the during the beginning of the COVID crisis that we had. The city had missteps. We were in uncharted territory, absolutely uncharted territory. And I asked Mr. Sun today, I said, what was your role in the sand going into the skate park? Because I had real issues with that. That was Mr. Dunick's decision. I asked about the fence that went on, went up in North Beach. I had real issues with that. Mr. Dunick that did that. Any issues regarding Mr. Sun going back before COVID or during COVID? He was the assistant city manager and the way this, this works is council gives direction and vision to the city manager. And the city manager gives orders and direction to his subordinates. So that's how I'm going to answer your question. But I'll, I'll say this, I meet with that man at least once a week, face to face. We probably talk three or four times a week on the phone. I would encourage all council members to meet with Mr. Sun on a weekly basis. And I think it might give you some insight to what he does. And how he performs his duties. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem James. I did have a conversation with him on the phone last week. Um, okay, thank you. Um, Councilmember Duncan, and just before I make my comments, I just wanted to ask you, you did mention, I took a note. That interim city manager Sun has diverse support in the community. Could you share with me who that is?
No.
Okay, and then, um, I guess, let me see, I wrote another note. It was difficult, the process was difficult, you had indicated. I know we had over a hundred and thirty applicants, no names mentioned, that's not confidential. In fact, we'll put that in the press release when we do the announcement. I used to write those here. Why was it so difficult if he was so qualified to have spent so much time?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, look, I was also supportive of the process of looking at and seeing what else was out there, seeing if we could get some fresh eyes. I think that's part of our responsibility to, to the citizens is to make sure that we have the best possible person. We went through the process and we, we did not locate someone who was more qualified than Mr. Sun. I mean, that, that's fact, right? So we did not land with someone that, that was more qualified. So I think while it was, you know, while it was difficult, I think it was, it was productive in that we got to see what else was out there. And, and frankly, you know, Eric has a, a knowledge of the city that's unmatched. To go back to your other question too, I mean, this popped in my head, I mean, one of the things I think that's important is the support that we received in a letter from the San Clemente Historical Society. I mean, if there's any organization that holds the heart of the city hands more than the organization, I don't know what it is. That was pretty persuasive and gave a lot of credence to that.
Okay, thank you. But before I go on, I know we got a letter from the historical side. That was our one letter of support. We got about fifty, not, not in support of this promotion tonight. All right, I'm going to wait. I'll say my comments when you're ready for me. I do have some comments.
Laura, you're on your comments right now.
No, I was doing some questions. Okay, can I continue or did someone have a question?
Right now, make your comments because we're about to.
Remember, no, there's no time limit, okay? Policy twelve oh one dash eleven has no time limit for council members speaking. In fact, you've gone on for thirty minutes before and not contributed much in some.
I'm not giving you a time limit. I'm telling you that you're, you're on right now.
Thank you. All right. All right. Thought you were headed there. Okay, so, um, I took some time to write some things down because this is a lot. I have, I have quite a bit to say. In my opinion, the reason we didn't hire a new city manager is because you didn't want to hire a city manager. You know, this, you wanted to promote Eric Sund to the city manager position all along. I feel like my time was wasted for my family and my activities and same with the candidates. Two full Saturdays, a part of a Sunday, a Friday night and two lunch hours.
Point of order, Laura, you're really going to go through this and you're going to accuse your other council members of, of misdeeds.
I have a feeling tonight, otherwise we wouldn't arrive here because I've been in those closed sessions and I know, please don't interrupt me or don't interrupt you, okay?
On the process here.
Excuse me, but Rosenberg's rules of orders, can member of the body interrupt the speaker? The general rule is no. I'm not saying anything that is illegal. I'm just making my opinion, okay? City attorney, I'm saying my opinion. Am I allowed to say my opinion in this free country?
Make your accusations and then we'll see what, what comes out of.
Fine, you can censure me again. That's fine. Okay, so, um, I feel that this recruitment, I do feel that it was hijacked. I've shared that with you, Mayor Ward. I also believe that we couldn't do better for San Clemente. I haven't been particularly pleased with the, the performance, the two and a half years I've been on council, speaking as a professional council member, nothing personal. I also think that by promoting him, we've enabled him to avoid accountability for some of the past actions that have occurred here and created a lot of disruption in our community. We heard from over fifty people in emails that have stated such in various different ways. But I just, I hope you all can be happy and accountable to your constituents, knowing that you made that decision tonight. I have heard from hundred percent of the people that were hoping that we would have someone new, fresh, clean slate, run our organization. It is the most important position in our organization and we need to go in a new direction is what I hear. And I try to listen to the voice of the people every, in every decision that I make. And it's important to note too, that San Clemente remains a very attractive place to come and have a career. We did receive over a hundred and thirty applications. We only interviewed a handful of eight. So there's more to, to go for, go choose from. And in my opinion, again, I don't believe Mr. Sun's decisions have been responsible. I, I believe that he has shot from the hip and making some of these decisions that have caused embarrassment to our town and to council. I also believe that he doesn't share information equally. And yes, Mayor Protem James, I do talk to him on the phone sometime and email. And I'm a very busy person, as you know, I work and raise two sons. But that, that said, I believe that we need to be informed. He doesn't communicate. All of us have been surprised by things that have happened and I'm not just referring to the sand in the skate park or the fencing around the pier bowl parking lots, pardon me. But as recent as this year with the softball fields, you know, I mean, I'm off on a Friday trying to enjoy my day off. And I got over a hundred emails from parents saying, we're told we can't start our softball season because the fields are closed. And we, we, we can't be blindsided in that manner. It's just, it's not, it doesn't do us any good. It reflects poorly on us and also when we don't have answers, it makes it really difficult for us to have to, you know, answer a hundred and something emails and you and all of us were in the same boat with that. And I found someone that can do the work for free, that's already a contractor with the city and insured and he would have done it. And, you know, I made the suggestion, I didn't tell them what to do because we have to do that as a body, I'm aware of that. But it was just dismissed and we could have saved over thirty thousand dollars in that regard. But lastly, we talk a lot about the unfunded pension liability. It totals forty nine million dollars now. Just eight months ago, it was forty four million dollars. But, you know, Mr. Sund has been here for seven and a half years and during his tenure, nothing was done to, to address the unfunded pension liabilities. That's addressed in our budget and there's no creative ideas to make sure it didn't balloon to that amount. I mean, if we continue the direction we are, we could go bankrupt. We really could. And we need to get up to a level far beyond the sixty seven percent or so that we're at funded and get up to about ninety percent. But selling hard assets is not the, is not the solution because it's gone. It's, it's one time. And doing that just to, to cover ourselves as these unfunded pension liability grows is really, really irresponsible. So we as a council have to come up with a better way. And then lastly, I'd like to suggest that we revisit the recruitment process, the subcommittee, and I'd really like to see, I thought I'd like to see the new council members serve on that. And go back to the process and even open it up to people who may not even just be city managers, but assistant city managers. And also private sector as well, but see what we can do because it's a big decision tonight. It's, this is a three year contract and we need to do what's best for our community. And I feel tonight that I have done what's best for my community and making a responsible decision. Thank you.
Are you finished, Laura?
I am. Thank you, Mayor Ward.
Very much. Go ahead, Mayor Proten.
I would, I would like to talk in regards to the unfunded liability. Absolutely, that unfunded liability went from forty four million dollars to forty nine million dollars over a period of several months. What council member Ferguson didn't mention there was that it was a result of the fact that, that the cowpers, actual actuaries made a huge mistake in their actuarial projections. And that's number one. And number two, the cowper's investment, rather than returning a discount rate of seven and a half percent, was more like four and a quarter percent. So regardless of what the, the city was pay, you know, was, was paying what cowpers told them to pay. Now, as it relates, as it relates to that number growing and growing and growing, I have an issue with that as well. And, and I've addressed that issue. But that issue is not the city manager's issue. That issue is prior councils. They, you know, I, I, I mean, you know, I hate, I hate doing that to you, Kathy, but.
You know, we don't have any, we don't have anything to do with cowpers.
No, but I mean that by that number growing and not addressing that number.
Okay, just to say that there were times where we, we were doing things to address that. We didn't just completely ignore.
No, I'm not saying, I'm, I'm not saying, what I'm saying is this was council's accountability to, to direct, to direct the city manager, the assistant city manager. So we, as the elected leaders, that is our accountability. It's the difference between governance and management. This body here governs the city. That man right over there, he manages the city and we govern the city as a body. Eric manages the city as, as an individual leader. And what we, what I think the public really needs to know is he could not have done a thing about the, the cowper's numbers because that had to do with actuarial projections that were, were completely off. And the fact that cowper, cowper's investments are returning about half of what they need to return. But I think it's important for everyone to know that. Thank you.
You're welcome. I just, you know, I wanted to say that when you say prior councils, I thank you very much for that. But I think every city finds themselves in that place. I think OCFA would agree with you. It, you know, it's, it's an interesting thing that we have and, you know, we will have to talk about pension liability more. That's not what we're doing tonight. You don't want to overfund pension liabilities. You want to just do it incrementally. And I think that's the strategy that most people have for that. But I appreciate that, you know, you've taken that on and are trying to do that tonight. I just want to say we have some public here and there's some public watching. Any any accusations toward any of these council members that anything was done inappropriately or wrong in, in this recruitment is just unfounded. And I'm just stunned that a council member would stoop so low as to choose this time to, to do that and to accuse council members of that. I think you'll find that the council here, we are all very committed to this city. We're committed to our staff and we try to do the right thing for our city. And what we're doing tonight is picking a proven leader for our city. We've gone through the recruitment process and this is the choice of, of the city council. So I will entertain a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to execute contract C twenty one dash nineteen.
So moved, probably so moved. Second.
There's a motion by Mayor Protem James and a second by Councilmember Duncan.
Councilmember Duncan.
I.
Councilmember Ferguson.
No.
Mayor Protem James.
I.
Mayor Ward.
I.
Motion carries three one with Councilmember Ferguson voting no and Councilmember No Block absent.
And Mayor Sund, congratulations.
Just got promoted to mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. I said mayor. Oh, my gosh. I'm just thinking. You know, you lead us so much, you know, I think very highly of you and the work that we've done in the last. I've been on seven and a half years and I believe you were the assistant city manager the entire time you were here before I was. But I'm proud that tonight we, we are hiring a very strong choice. And I think that that's what we have in you regionally. That's what I've heard from regional partners, that we have a very strong city manager already in our midst. So I'm very happy that the council has, has chosen you. So I will welcome you.
But before you, before you say something, something that Mayor Protem James said struck a nerve. I, I do think I've probably spoken with you, Eric, more in the last five months than I have with my wife. We barely speak with kids' activities and different things going on. I think people can relate to that. In the course of that, you've always come through. You've always been truthful. You, you, you've never let me down. So it's a tough job. You know it. I think you've shown yourself well in terms of your composure when there have been criticisms. And, you know, every, there, there are, there are things that you can do better. You know that. And we expect, obviously, you know, you to, to step up and, but I congratulate you as well. I think it's well deserved. but I congratulate you as well. I think it's well deserved. And we're looking for a bright future and moving forward together.
So Mr. Sun, that's what I meant to say. So do you have something that you'd like to say?
Very briefly, first, I'm honored and humbled to be voted as your city manager. When I came to the city of San Clemente, I came because I wanted to do the right thing for what's best for the city of San Clemente. And I can say proudly that all of my actions have reflected that. And sometimes making the right decision is very difficult to make because it doesn't make everyone happy. But at the end of the day, it's all about what's best for San Clemente. And Gene said it and I have to echo it. I wouldn't be here today without the success and the support of the existing city staff. Because we have an amazing group of individuals who are multi talented and multifaceted. Just see from IT's perspective of how they've been able to address this COVID pandemic through Zoom and so forth. They've really had to change their direction. And that speaks to all the employees at San Clemente that can do more with less. And so I want to make sure that I can provide the support that the council needs as well as implement the policy in the direction of the council, which I respect highly. As well as supporting the city staff to make sure that they have the tools to do their job efficiently. With that, I just again, thank you for the opportunity and I look forward to criticisms and I look forward to successes. And with that, again, thank you, council.
Madam Clerk, what item are we on now?
We're on the consent calendar.
All right.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. Unless council staff or the public request removal of an item for separate discussion and action. I have not received any requests for removal.
Okay, so let me ask Mayor Potem.
I would like to look at F and H.
Councilmember Duncan.
No.
Councilmember Ferguson, do you have any items to pull?
None.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to move the balance.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mayor Potem James and a second by Councilmember Duncan.
Councilmember Duncan.
I.
Councilmember Ferguson.
I.
Potem James.
I.
And Mayor Ward.
I. Thank you. We're on item F. Mayor Potem.
Yeah, I, do we have a staff report on this?
I don't know if we have Samantha Wiley here.
Yes, she is here. So Samantha, if you could come on to speak to this item, please. Give her a second to turn her camera.
Yeah.
And for the benefit of the public, this item is amendment to partnership agreement with Pier Pride.
I'm glad you pulled this item.
Yeah.
Good idea. Must have gotten Samantha when she left the room.
Maybe just for efficiency sakes, we can go to item H.
Let's go to.
Samantha to come on.
Right, please.
Item H, Madam Clerk, is which item?
Item H is interim public works director services.
Mr. Sun.
So yeah, so just to communicate, as we all have been made aware, our previous public works director, Tom Bonnigut resigned for an opportunity in the Bay Area. So we wish him the best of luck. We have engaged Bob Hall and associate who are public works professional recruitment. That flyer should be posted this week. And so the recruitment process will begin for finding a new public works director. In that interim period, I thought it was extremely important that we had some leadership that was in public works to continue to drive that ship in the right direction. I did reach out to a number of potential candidates for the interim public works director position. At the end of the day, I selected Manuel Gomez with Interwest Consulting. Manuel started last week and he is the former Public Works Director for the City of Irvine. Prior to that, he held positions in public works with the City of Santa Ana. And post his retirement, he has been doing interim public works engagements. His most recent one was the interim Public Works Director for the City of Laguna Beach while they recruited for a public works director. Manuel has been through all different types of experiences and is bringing a lot of leadership and sound knowledge to the department. The cost that you see before you is benefits, excuse me, is already budgeted with existing salary savings with the vacancy of Tom Bonnigut. And Manuel will be here between two to three months until we get a new public works director. He will be working kind of, I'll say, a morphed part time, morphed full time position with the city. Right now, he's kind of doing full time, getting acclimated to the organization. I can tell you in my first week with him, he caught a number of things that were fantastic catches for us. So I'm really looking forward to working with him. And I think it's the right person to continue to lead public works while we do a recruitment.
Can can we see Mr. Gomez?
I believe he is on. And so Mr. Manuel Gomez, if you could come on and give a brief, I guess, acceptance speech, if you will.
There he is.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, city manager, Sund. Thank you. I'm very happy to be here, the land to join an outstanding organization in just a very short time that I've been here since last week. I I can see you have a tremendously great staff in public works. Maintenance group is outstanding. Our engineering staff is working very hard. And I look forward to helping keep things moving until you get your permanent replacement.
Mr. Gomez, this is Gene James. I I I have a a issue that near and dear to my heart and I understand you're a subject matter expert at it. And that is sidewalk, sidewalk cleaning. Could you tell tell us about the maintenance program you set up in Laguna Beach? This is why I pulled it.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. I I can't take one hundred percent credit for that program. It was actually already in place. While I was there, I did work with the city manager to make some refinements, particularly as a result of the COVID pandemic and took that opportunity to evaluate its effectiveness, particularly in the downtown impacts that were happening with the businesses. And as a result of trying to re re encourage visitors to return to the downtown, support the businesses. And so as a result of that, working with their maintenance staff, we put together a very aggressive frequency for sidewalk cleaning. And I think the results there have worked out very well. At Eric's direction, I'm working with our maintenance staff here in San Clemente reviewing the frequency levels and I'll be making some recommendations to to Mr. Sun. I've already had some preliminary discussions with him. Trying to address what what I've seen as some concerns, not only from your community, but also from Mr. Sun shared with me and then my own observations as I toured the downtown last week.
You walked Elmar. Thank you very much. I'm I'm very happy to hear you you did that. And Mr. Sun, at some point in time, on my weekly brief, can we include Mr. Gomez in in that?
I actually plan on setting up one on ones with each council member and the new interim director so you can meet with him directly.
Excellent. So so with that, Madam Mayor, I will make a motion to approve and authorize the city manager to execute the First Amendment to Contract C twenty one dash eighteen by between the City of San Clemente and Interwest Consulting Group. This amendment increases the contract amount from an amount not to exceed twenty four thousand nine hundred and seventy five dollars to an amount not to exceed ninety four thousand nine hundred and seventy five dollars, an increase of seven thousand dollars.
Okay, motion by Mayor Potem James. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Duncan.
Councilmember Duncan.
I.
Councilmember Ferguson.
I.
Mayor Potem James.
I.
And Mayor Ward.
I.
Carries four oh.
Okay, so we'll go back to item F. Ms. Wiley.
My apologies.
Welcome.
Thank you. So this item before you tonight is an amendment to the Pier Pride Partnership Agreement. This is a First Amendment. I think I I would like to commend Pier Pride Foundation as really a tremendous partner for the city. I've had the pleasure of working alongside their board and their really dedicated volunteers and and they have continued to prove that they value the pier. They value it as a true treasure of the City of San Clemente. And their sole mission is to continue that facility for the long term. Improving it, enhancing it, bringing people to it, building tourism around it and all of those details. So this amendment is just going to continue that agreement further. They 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 do some events throughout the year. There are no hard costs that we're incurring with this partnership. I do want to note that anything that we're waiving is a soft cost. So it might be a special event application or a a facility rental. The previous agreement, I should say, also allowed the use of the trolley. And that was to enhance their their light at the pier event. So I'm happy to take any questions, but the the contents of the staff report also do give a a brief overview of what they've contributed since we initiated their partnership agreement. And then they are, they are actively working on on new projects as well, including the end of pier concession stand remodel.
Can you, can you give us some detail on that?
I can, yes. And it's it's really being managed by public works, I will say, as an engineering project. But I think some of the the highlights of that project that Pier Pride's active in includes some really incredible public art enhancements. They're going to do some sculptures, which is really new to the city and in terms of our public art, we don't have too many of those. And then we're going to be looking at adding some additional seating around the pier's edge, kind of as a lookout point. And and they're just, they're going to add some other kind of fun nuances that will again, attract people to the end of the pier, encourage people to stay and enjoy their time there. And really, and take in that environment. A lot of folks might only go down there to fish. We know a lot of people walk to the end and they turn around. I think Pier Pride really has a vision of of making it a place to go to. Really a destination. So that's their plan.
So I'm I'm going to make a challenge to my fellow council members. I'd like to know when council, as as a as a body, can, without violating the Brown Act, of course, pay up and pay out of our individual pockets and take a leap off off the pier.
You know.
The city attorney is laughing. I think we should include him in that.
We've just been talking about insurance. So.
Yeah.
So timely.
Yeah, we used to, I think the mayor used to do that. I have not taken that opportunity. I didn't take it in two thousand seventeen and I may watch you.
I did it with Don Brown and Lori Doncheck last year.
Was that through Pier Pride?
Yes.
Oh, good for you.
Wasn't cheap either.
No. So I believe that's one of the auction items and I believe Pier Pride has an online auction coming soon. Samantha, do you know when that is?
I don't. I don't know the specific date, but I I do know it. It's on their website. I know that. And then, of course, they do celebrate Pier Pride Month in October. That's really their their big fundraising month as well.
Right. So maybe it's it's in that future.
I'm in for jumping off. And and on that note, I mean, as long as Gene jumps with me. But, you know, I'm looking forward to those events in October. I was I was looking at that and seeing that we had missed that last year, right? And how how really that kind of holds the community back. So I I'm really looking forward to getting those events going, including peer jump.
Jumping the fifty, sixty feet was nothing compared to riding on a boogie board on the back of the jet ski
Yeah.
of marine safety.
I think there's an art to that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So with that, with that, Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve and authorize the city manager to execute amendment number one to the Pier Pride Foundation Partnership Agreement, contract number C one, eight dash two, eight.
All right, now go ahead and second that motion. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Duncan.
I.
Councilmember Ferguson.
I.
Mayor Potem James.
I.
And Mayor Ward.
I.
Carries four oh. Moving on to public hearings, the public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to receive ten minutes and public testimony not strictly three minutes for speaker. While in closure at the public hearing, the city council will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues and act upon the matter by motion. The first public hearing is to consider all objections or protest, if any, to the proposed debate, weeds, rubbish, refuse and dirt upon street sidewalks, parkways and private property within the City of San Clemente. I have not received any speaker card, but it is still necessary to open and close the public hearing.
Okay, can I just remind everyone that they need to put their microphone on mute? I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. We have no comments. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, Adam Tamian, manager of co compliance and the Park Rangers. The item before you tonight is the second part in our weed debate program. At the March sixteenth meeting, the city council took action to declare weeds vacant and unoccupied developed properties a nuisance. At this point, there is a resolution attached to this agenda report that the staff is recommending the council approve and it relates to directing city staff to move forward and abate the noncompliant lots that remain after the May fifteenth deadline of any weeds or refuse. I will end my presentation with that. I am available for any questions. I believe that we also have our weed debate contractor, Ed Stewart, available for any questions.
Okay, does any council have any?
Mr. Tamian, Adam. My my question to you, maybe, now this is a silly question. Those two lots on El Camino Real, on South El Camino Real, the two former gas gas stations, are we close to something happening in those two lots?
So one of the properties, the former top, sorry, Cecilia Guardo Daley, Community Development Director, thank you, Mayor and Councilwoman. One of the properties is the former Top Toon site. We have had an active development application in process that has been going through the review. It went to the design review subcommittee and is almost ready for a public hearing. We have some issues to work out with Caltrans because of the proximity or the the co terminus of the lot with Caltrans right away. But we think and the applicant thinks that we can get resolution on that pretty quickly. So I think we're close to a decision on that project, which is really exciting. And that's a two story development, very nicely designed and it is a restaurant on the first floor with offices on the second floor. The other property across the street on Valencia and El Camino Real, across from the Old Tommy's. We have had a preliminary application submitted to us. This was back in the fall. And it was a potential developer doing their due diligence on a mixed use project. That's a combination of residential, commercial and retail. But no formal application has been submitted, just that preliminary application. But we do know that that applicant has been following up with staff very diligently recently to make sure that their understanding of all the issues prior to submission. So we're optimistic that we can get that application in the door very soon and and process that expeditiously as well.
Thank you. And it would be wonderful in the meantime if we really, you know, keep an eye on those those two lots because they really tend to be eyesores and they're they're a gateway to the city and anything you can do to to keep up that I'll greatly appreciate.
We will remain vigilant on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Duncan, is there any question to the weed debatement?
One quick question for Mr. Tamian. So were the were the property owners that had these weed problems given ample opportunity to to correct those weeds before we get to this point where the city might step in?
Yes, Councilmember Duncan, and thank you for this question. After the May sixteenth meeting, a notice was sent to property owners on April first giving them until April, till May fifteenth to clear the lots. I will tell you, as a matter of our our normal course of action, there are some situations where it may take people a little bit longer than May fifteenth to clean the lots. And if they contact the city, we we will work with them to find a reasonable timeframe. But this year, I can tell you, we've gotten one extension for additional time because the amount of time we give them is so gentle.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion and I think we should probably read it.
I got it right here. So adopt resolution number twenty one dash ten entitled, The Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, ordering the director of community development to abate the nuisances by having weeds, rubbish, refuse and dirt removed from vacant properties and unoccupied developed properties within the city and notifying the state, county and or public agency. within the city and notifying the state, county, and/or public agency."
Second.
Motion by Mayor Potem James and a second by Councilmember Duncan.
Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Aye.
Mayor Potem James.
Aye.
And Mayor Ward.
Aye.
Harry Sworo. The next public hearing relates to the 2021-22 Annual Action Plan for the expenditure of community development block grant funds. Again, I do not have any speaker cards, but it is necessary to open and close the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm going to open the public hearing. Seeing no public comments, I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you.
All right, would the council like a brief staff report on this item?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Gabe.
Okay. Good evening, Ma'am Mayor, members of the City Council, Gabriel Perez, your city planner. So this item before you tonight is consideration of the 2021-2022 Annual Action Plan. And that's for the expenditures of our community development block grant funds, also known as CDBG. The purpose of the plan is to receive the city's allocated CDBG funds and then provide project details in connection with those funds. So this year, staff is estimating that we will be receiving allocation of $324,749. Staff also identified $168,795 in prior year uncommitted CDBG funds. That will be available for programming this next fiscal year. And so in total, that will be $493,544. In the action plan, there are funding priorities for public improvements, housing, commercial rehabilitation, public services, and administration. And staff recommends that the council approve and adopt the 2021-2022 CDBG Annual Action Plan and authorize the city manager to submit the annual action plan to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And that will execute the HUD contract. That's the end of my report, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
So Mr. Perez, I'll ask you a question. So we're, we're submitting this to, for our housing element or to HCD, right? It's HCD?
No, this is to the, to HUD.
I think I had that right. That's why.
Yes.
So when does the program actually, can you give some information of when people could actually start giving us applications for this money? Because we have, this is a considerable amount of money that's available since we have unused portion from last year.
Yeah, so for our commercial and housing rehab program, that would become available at the start of the fiscal year.
Okay.
And then we have the CDBG Public Service Grant Program. And those grants usually become available for the, for the public to apply for. It's usually around the, the end of the fall.
Okay, I just wanted to get that out for the public. I know we'll be advertising that. I appreciate that. Counsel, is there any other questions?
Just one question, Mayor Ward. City Planner Perez, are there funds here to address homelessness? I know that that's one of the subject areas that, that HUD, you know, provides for. And what, where is that allocation? Or how much is that?
There are some related funds available for that. So there, there are nonprofit organizations that serve the homeless. So one of the grants is going to Family Assistance Ministries. And they're going to receive a grant of about $15,000, and they provide homeless services. But, you know, maybe on a related topic, we also provide funds to Fair Housing. So if there are issues related to Fair Housing issues, you know, the public is able to get assistance from that organization as well.
Yeah, I know that this is a sort of a diverse set of priorities where we, we allocate this money. I am glad to see the $15,000 going to fam, of course, a really integral part of our community programs that they run. Glad to see that.
Councilmember Ferguson, do you have any question of Mr. Perez? No? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move this one. Let's see here. I move to adopt, to approve and adopt the draft 2021-2022 Annual Action Plan for use of community development block grant funds and to authorize the city managers to submit the annual action plan to HUD to execute the HUD contract and to accept grant revenues of $324,749 from HUD to account and authorize a related budget appropriation in the amount of 324,749 to the CDBG fund for the amounts in the 2021 to 2022 action plan.
Is there a second? Councilmember Ferguson, would you like to second that?
A second, sure.
Okay, I saw you reaching for the button. All right, so a motion by Councilmember Duncan and a second by Councilmember Ferguson.
Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Aye.
Mayor Potem James.
Aye.
And Mayor Ward.
Aye.
Harry Sworo. Next public hearing is to consider adoption of the Orange County Sheriff's Department vehicle impound fees. Again, I have not received any cards, but it's necessary to open and close the public.
All right, so I'm going to now open the public hearing for item 7C. Seeing no public comments, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Mayor, this item brought for you tonight is kind of standard operating procedure when the county updates their fee schedule, be it ambulance or vehicle impound fees. It's required by each agency that is contracted with OCSD to adopt those fees because those fees are what's passed on to the end users in the event their vehicle is impounded. So before you tonight, you have an updated impound fee that the county has provided, and we're asking the council to adopt that resolution for fee structure purposes so that those costs are identified.
Okay. Counselor, is there any question?
Can I make, can I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 21-11 entitled "The Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, authorizing the Orange County Sheriff's Department to collect its updated fee for the traffic violator apprehension program in the city of San Clemente."
Second.
Motion by Mayor Potem James and a second by Councilmember Duncan.
Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Aye.
Mayor Potem James.
Aye.
And Mayor.
Aye.
Question, Harry Sworo. Item 8A, unfinished business. This is a review from the city attorney regarding a request for defense and bonding arbitration in Beaver versus James, case number 302020, 01145593-CU-BF-CJC, Orange County Superior Court.
Okay. Scott, are you going to be advising us on this?
Yeah, I think.
Aye.
They had a comment.
Councilmember Ferguson, would you please issue your reasons for not participating in this, this item? Because you're going to leave the council.
Right.
Without, without being able to represent our city.
Right.
Insurance claim.
Exactly. First, I'm going to make two, just as the attorney, after I read the report, I noticed that two, two of the three letters were missing, at least in my hard copy. For the insurance coverage, there were two missing, two letters. Only BBK's letter is in my hard copy. I want to let you know that, city attorney. And I'm not sure if they were missed or maybe online. Do you know if all three letters were placed online? Just want to point that out for the public. There are missing letters. And, and then also, I just, yep, that's it. Okay. And I'm recusing myself.
Can you please identify which letter that is?
Yeah, there was one, I'm trying to think back. There was one from Mr. Jonathan Scholl, CEO of CJPIA. And then, I can't remember the other one. Oh, yes, from the Executive Committee, a denial of the Executive Committee in response to BBK's letter seeking coverage and appeal on March 23rd, I believe, was the date. So two of the three letters aren't in my hard copy.
Insurance, insurance matter where we're asking to appeal that dispute. And we need a council quorum.
Well, I, I've recused, and by law, as elected official, I don't need to make any reason, but I did earlier, as you know, so I'm already on the record. So I will be recusing, so let me know. Um, city attorney, could you please advise, do I just turn off my screens since I'm participating remotely and then come back after?
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Ferguson, for asking that. Before we get there, I'd like to announce that Councilmember James has a financial interest in this matter, obviously. And on my advice, he's recused himself from the matter. He's left the meeting and doesn't count as being present, so he's not part of the quorum. So that's what I wanted to, to discuss with you, Councilmember Ferguson, if you intended to not be part of the quorum or just to abstain from participation.
I'm not going to be part of the quorum. I'm recusing myself from this item. Okay?
You can be present and just not participate in that would.
I'm good. All right, city attorney, may I lead now?
Point of order, what's the basis for the recusal?
I don't need to have a recusal basis for doing so.
You're calling.
As elected official. Okay, well, I said, I stated it earlier, so I did provide some information on that, but I'm not going to at this time. So I did state that loud and clear, and I will be recusing myself at the moment. Okay, thank you.
Point of order, all you did was recuse yourself. Now she's gone. So, you know, Councilmember Duncan, we find ourselves again without a quorum to be able to at least file an insurance appeal on a, a potential matter. So, city attorney.
Yeah, just mayor, when we get to this point, the council can't take up the item. In fact, the meeting is ended.
Right.
And your prior practice has been, when that occurs, to cease all operations and to move on to the next item. So I wouldn't suggest that you deliberate this or that we provide backup to you because when you have less than a quorum, the, the meeting ends.
Okay, can we take a 10-minute break, please?
Sure.
Is that okay? All right.
And I've got Chris Steele and Alan Burns. We'll let them go.
Yes, thank you, gentlemen. I'm very sorry.
Hi, everyone.
Business. Thank you. We're going to take a 10-minute break, 10-minute recess.
Do we, do we exit now or do we hang around? Should we stand by?
Alan, you can go ahead and exit.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, is the item over? It's Laura. Hello? Hello?
Okay, so we are back from our break and back in the public portion, and I believe we are under new business. Madam clerk?
Uh, madam mayor, if I could make a motion to take item nine G and move it just ahead of of new business, please?
I will second that motion.
Okay. Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Aye.
James? Aye.
And Mayor Ward?
Aye.
Carrie Sworo?
Okay.
Item G is a report from the Beaches Parks Recreation Manager concerning the strategic plan for citywide concession operations. And we do have some speaker cards.
Okay, we do. And so Ms. Wiley, I think you're there. We'll go ahead and we'll take public comments first.
Your speaker is Rebecca Gensler.
Good evening, council members. First of all, I want to say I used to work in property management with board members, and I know you have a very thankless job, but I want to thank you for the good job that you do and what you do for Sam many. And as a small business, I appreciate everything that you do. Um, as I said, my name's Rebecca Gensler. I'm the owner of the Pier Grill and Tackle. As we all know, with the COVID year, it's been a challenge for everyone, especially small businesses. Not only was I closed down for approximately four months, it took very stringent measures to reopen. I won't go into great detail, as that was in my email letter already sent to you this last week. As stated in the email this morning to the council, I have read the experts' report, and I agree with option A of a renegotiation of the five-year contract and ask for the council's support. It is more than just a shack that serves food. It's a family, it's a fishing family, a military family, a city family, and families that come from afar. Watching and representing the city of San Clemente as a small seaside village at the pier, I see many things happen. Um, little boys that come out to learn to fish and our fishing family that stands behind me that watches them catch their first fish and all the excitement. And that's what San Clemente is all about, and that's what we want to represent. The Pier Grill is my passion, and I ask for your support to continue the legacy of the little shack at the end of the pier in our beautiful small town. And I thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Ava Domon, I believe.
Good evening, my name is Ava Domon. I'm 16 years old, and I've lived in San Clemente for my whole life. I've worked at the grill for over a year. My older sister has worked at the grill for over two years and still works summers when she's home from college. I stand before you tonight to give my opinion about what the grill means to me. The girl has taught me the responsibility of hard, physical work. I scrub dishes, clean tables, and help distribute food and work long out, daily hours. I've grown to love interacting with the regulars that come to the shack for breakfast or for a warm cup of coffee. Because of the owner Becky has been working, has been so welcoming to all that visit, people come back and it's a regular meeting place for many residents of California. I love to feel like I'm a part of a special something that people feel the need to say good morning and stop by and say hello. Becky cares about me and she cares about the people who visit the shack. What the shack has taught me is that working at an establishment that respects and honors the employee is important. There's no place that will understand being a high schooler who values grades as much as Becky. Even though I am scheduled to work, she has never once said no to a day off so I could study for a final or finish a school project. Even though this means she will have to work extra hard because she's a man down. She respects my education and is flexible when I need time off of my studies. I know if she wasn't the owner, that wouldn't happen. She's true, she truly cares about me and the residents and the visitor to the shack. I think of the city San Clemente will lose an incredibly important and loyal asset by closing down the shack. You cannot get a more dedicated and hardworking person to run the grill than Becky. I hope you take into consideration how important the shack is to the people of San Clemente and seriously think about what it means to so many whose income is dependent upon it. Thank you for your time, and I hope you make a very thoughtful decision.
The next speaker, speaker is Gabrielle Unzweck.
Good evening, city council members. Thank you so much. As a high school, um, CUSD High School public teacher at San Juan Hills High School and proud mom of two teenage sons, one right here who's part of the fishing family and our husband in the room. I am here to talk to you about the positive role model that Becky is. Becky provides daily interactions on the weekend with the the children and all the members of the pier fishing family. It's that positive role model interactions that is what is happening to the kids that they need to have happen to them right now to help them during this very difficult time. In the last year, I've witnessed many of my high school students struggle to find a healthy outlet where they can get fresh air, exercise, and a sense of belonging and accomplishment. Becky and her comfort food and her smile, um, really in the entire San Clemente Pier Fishing Family provide the safety net for our 15-year-old son and many, many other people who view the pier as a second home. Becky's a part of the solution for our youth. She is part of the solution. I recognize that also as a mom and a fellow educator of 24 years. I greatly admire her positive energy, generous spirit, incredible work ethic, and compassion that she purposefully, carefully displays to our youth. From providing nourishing hot meals weekly to donating fishing rigs to the teenagers at their Secret Santa Exchange Christmas party, Becky puts her heart and soul into her work. It goes way beyond just selling breakfast burritos to hungry fishermen, even though that is definitely a highlight, too. I'm so indebted to her and the other members of the San Clemente Pier Fishing Family who mentor our son and many others as the teenagers navigate through these tough teenage years. Becky is a big part of the reason that our son has a zest for life and fishing and appreciation for following one's passion. Becky's selfless nature teaches our youth to do the right thing in life, even when it is difficult. Working in the location Becky works at is no easy task, but Becky does it with pride and purpose. I humbly ask you to do the correct thing by allowing Becky to continue her good work for the visitors to the pier who enjoy her food and hospitality. Respected city council members, our youth is watching and hoping for a positive outcome. My husband and I thank you for your time and thoughtful and your thoughtful consideration in this manner. Thank you.
Next speaker is Rich Unzweck. Rich?
I did what my wife says. She's a very, um, but I just want to say that if Becky is not allowed to manage that, uh, snack shack at the end of the pier, there's going to be a huge void in a lot of people's lives. She has touched many kids, adults, families, people that come in from all over and walk that pier. And when Becky greets them at the end of that pier, it's a lifetime of memories for a lot of people. They come back week after week, you know, year after year. And I would just like to say that, you know, why fix something that's not broken? She does a great job. I am so, um, relieved when I dropped my son off at the beginning of the day, and he's out there at the end of the pier, that if anything was to go wrong, that, you know, Becky would be there to assist in any way that she could. And I just hope that she's allowed to continue running the shack at the end of the pier. Thank you.
Next speaker is James Montano.
Um, good evening. Um, I'm part of the Pier Fishing Family at the end of the pier. And I'd just like to say that Becky is a consistent, positive influence and a friendly figure for all of the kids and the adults that fish on the end of the pier and not only like fish, but go to the end of the pier. And it would be a real shame if she was no longer able to work there. So I'd like to ask you to please let her, um, continue running the shack there. Thank you.
And the last speaker is Rick Dival.
Good evening, my name is Rick Dival, and many of you already know me, and I've been around a long time. And you might know that I start every morning on the pier except for Saturdays, started on the
Okay, Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Aye.
James.
Aye.
Mayor Ward.
Aye.
Carrie Sworo.
Okay.
Item G is a report from the Beaches Parks and Recreation Manager concerning the strategic plan for citywide concession operations. And we do have some speaker cards.
Okay, we do. And so Ms. Wiley, I think you're there. We'll go ahead and we'll take public comments first.
Your speaker is Rebecca Gensler.
Good evening, councilmembers. First of all, I want to say I used to work in property management with board members, and I know you have a very thankless job, but I want to thank you for the good job that you do and what you do for San Clemente. And as a small business, I appreciate everything that you do. As I said, my name's Rebecca Gensler. I'm the owner of the Pier Grill and Tackle. As we all know, with the COVID year, it's been a challenge for everyone, especially small businesses. Not only was I closed down for approximately four months, it took very stringent measures to reopen. I won't go into great detail, as that was in my email letter already sent to you this last week. As stated in the email this morning to the council, I have read the experts' report, and I agree with option A of a renegotiation of the five-year contract, and ask for the council's support. It is more than just a shack that serves food. It's a family. It's a fishing family, a military family, a city family, and families that come from afar. Watching and representing the city of San Clemente as a small seaside village at the pier, I see many things happen. Little boys that come out to learn to fish, and our fishing family that stands behind me that watches them catch their first fish and all the excitement, and that's what San Clemente is all about, and that's what we want to represent. The Pier Grill is my passion, and I ask for your support to continue the legacy of the little shack at the end of the pier in our beautiful small town, and I thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Ava Domon, I believe.
Good evening. My name is Ava Domon. I'm sixteen years old, and I've lived in San Clemente for my whole life. I've worked at the grill for over a year. My older sister has worked at the grill for over two years and still works summers when she's home from college. I stand before you tonight to give my opinion about what the grill means to me. The girl has taught me the responsibility of hard, physical work. I scrub dishes, clean tables, and help distribute food and work long out, daily hours. I've grown to love interacting with the regulars that come to the shack for breakfast or for a warm cup of coffee. Because of the owner Becky has been working, has been so welcoming to all that visit, people come back, and it's a regular meeting place for many residents of California. I love to feel like I'm a part of a special something that people feel the need to say good morning and stop by and say hello. Becky cares about me, and she cares about the people who visit the shack. What the shack has taught me is that working at an establishment that respects and honors the employee is important. There's no place that will understand being a high schooler who values grades as much as Becky. Even though I am scheduled to work, she has never once said no to a day off so I could study for a final or finish a school project. Even though this means she will have to work extra hard because she's a man down. She respects my education and is flexible when I need time off of my studies. I know if she wasn't the owner, that wouldn't happen. She's true, she truly cares about me and the residents and the visitor to the shack. I think of the city San Clemente would lose an incredibly important and loyal asset by closing down the shack. You cannot get a more dedicated and hardworking person to run the grill than Becky. I hope you take into consideration how important the shack is to the people of San Clemente, and seriously think about what it means to so many whose income is dependent upon it. Thank you for your time, and I hope you make a very thoughtful decision.
The next speaker, speaker is Gabrielle Unzweht.
Good evening, city councilmembers. Thank you so much. As a high school, CUSD High School public teacher at San Juan Hills High School, and proud mom of two teenage sons, one right here who's part of the fishing family and our husband in the room. I am here to talk to you about the positive role model that Becky is. Becky provides daily interactions on the weekend with the children and all the members of the Pier Fishing Family. It's that positive role model interactions that is what is happening to the kids that they need to have happen to them right now to help them during this very difficult time. In the last year, I've witnessed many of my high school students struggle to find a healthy outlet where they can get fresh air, exercise, and a sense of belonging and accomplishment. Becky and her comfort food and her smile really and the entire San Clemente Pier Fishing Family provide the safety net for our fifteen-year-old son and many, many other people who view the pier as a second home. Becky's part of the solution for our youth. She is part of the solution. I recognize that also as a mom and a fellow educator of twenty-four years. I greatly admire her positive energy, generous spirit, incredible work ethic, and compassion that she purposefully, carefully displays to our youth. From providing nourishing hot meals weekly to donating fishing rigs to the teenagers at their secret Santa exchange Christmas party, Becky puts her heart and soul into her work. It goes way beyond just selling breakfast burritos to hungry fishermen, even though that is definitely a highlight, too. I'm so indebted to her and the other members of the San Clemente Pier Fishing Family who mentor our son and many others as the teenagers navigate through these tough teenage years. Becky is a big part of the reason that our son has his S for Life and Fishing and appreciation for following one's passion. Becky's selfless nature teaches our youth to do the right thing in life, even when it is difficult. Working in the location Becky works at is no easy task, but Becky does it with pride and purpose. I humbly ask you to do the correct thing by allowing Becky to continue her good work for the visitors to the pier who enjoy her food and hospitality. Respected city councilmembers, our youth is watching and hoping for a positive outcome. My husband and I thank you for your time and thoughtful and your thoughtful consideration in this manner. Thank you.
Next speaker is Rich Unzweht. Rich?
I did what my wife says. She's a very, but I just want to say that if Becky is not allowed to manage that snack shack at the end of the pier, there's going to be a huge void in a lot of people's lives. She has touched many kids, adults, families, people that come in from all over and walk that pier. And when Becky greets them at the end of that pier, it's a lifetime of memories for a lot of people. They come back week after week, you know, year after year. And I would just like to say that, you know, why fix something that's not broken? She does a great job. I am so relieved when I dropped my son off at the beginning of the day and he's out there at the end of the pier that if anything was to go wrong, that, you know, Becky would be there to assist in any way that she could. And I just hope that she's allowed to continue running the shack at the end of the pier. Thank you.
Next speaker is James Montano.
Good evening. I'm part of the Pier Fishing Family at the end of the pier. And I'd just like to say that Becky is a consistent, positive influence and a friendly figure for all of the kids and the adults that fish on the end of the pier, and not only like fish, but go to the end of the pier. And it would be a real shame if she was no longer able to work there, so I'd like to ask you to please let her continue running the shack there. Thank you.
And the last speaker is Rick Dival.
Good evening. My name is Rick Dival, and many of you already know me, and I've been around a long time. You might know that I start every morning on the pier, except for Saturdays. Started on the Muni. Becky, in the, in the time I've known her, when she actually started working for Scott, she's been such a positive influence on everybody out there. And I'm also a board member of Pier Pride, and she has worked just fantastically with the board in getting us everything we need from her shack and to go on and do the things we, we do. And hopefully, our project this year coming up is a rejuvenation of the shack, so I'd like to see Becky in there for all the things she's done. She's just been a joy to work with. And by the way, the virtual auction for Pier Pride starts May nineteenth. That's all.
That's the end of public comments?
That's the end.
Okay, so this item is item G, Citywide Concession Operations, a strategic plan. And Ms. Wiley, do you have any presentation that you would like to give to the council?
I do. I'll just, I will, I will be brief. The staff report is detailed, and the consultant's findings are attached. So I think that really summarizes it, but I do want to recap how we got here. We have these concession stands that all are currently on a month-to-month lease. And we took the opportunity to work with a professional in the field. I do have our consultant on the line as well, Mike Holtzman. And he has spent forty years in this business of food service. And we brought him in to look at our citywide concessions, as we've never done it before, and took the opportunity to understand areas for improvement, and really what should be the best industry standard for concession operations. Mike has attested to several times that the city of San Clemente has truly incredible concession facilities and his expertise on a national level. And, and the goal here is to get the, the most value for those buildings while also still maintaining the heart of the community, because I know that is what San Clemente is about. I absolutely understand that. So we looked at four concession stands, North Beach, T Street, the end of Pier, and the Richard T. Steed Memorial Park concession operations. We, we took a couple days with Mike and toured those facilities. And again, the findings are in the report, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I do also want to speak to briefly the bike rental shop located on North El Camino Real. This was an ask of the council at the previous council meeting. And the recommendation there, our consultant did not review that facility because it was a last-minute add-in, but staff have looked at it. And if council's desire is to, to consider bringing that up to market value, the recommendation from staff would be to go out and do a proposal process, see what we can get back. We have a creative community of folks who, who might have great ideas for that location, or it could, it could remain as a bike rental shop as well. I think we're open to options there. But certainly, again, we are seeing that it's under market value, what the city is for gaining in return for revenue. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but like I said, I do have Mike on the line as well.
Okay, Mike, I see you. Nice to see you.
Thanks, thanks for having me.
Yes, so Mayor Proten, go ahead.
So let me start. We have, we have a lot of interested parties here in regards to the pier concession. Ms. Wiley, what are we collecting in rent right now from the pier concession?
The base is three hundred dollars a month, or six, or six percent. And I'm working on pulling up the final numbers and just trying to grab those really quickly.
There is a staff recommendation on that.
Yeah, that's, that's where I'm going.
Okay.
And on the bicycle shop, I'm gonna be all over the board here. Sorry. On the bicycle.
That's okay.
What are we, what are we collecting in rent there?
So we, we average annually about three thousand dollars a year for that facility. It equates to about two hundred and fifty-four dollars a month. The requirement is a hundred dollars a month. That's, that's the minimum. I will say that, you know, market value as a commercial space, given the location, the parking, standalone building, you, you could potentially get around twenty-five hundred dollars a month at a commercial level, if that's the desire of the council, based on our kind of comparable research.
And at Steed Park, we're getting what per month? Or what were we getting annually at Steed Park?
We see about nineteen thousand dollars a year from Steed Park. The minimum is about thirteen sixty or roughly, and we, we get that at a minimum. And Steed, Steed runs, the concession stand operates primarily on the weekends, as, as this council knows, and I'll share it with the public. Steed Park is actually operated as a tournament facility. That is how it was built. We do run practices and adult leagues during the week, but the concession operations typically not open. It has been often on in previous years, but we, the, the, the big operation is the weekends.
So Mike, I'll, I'll start with Steed Park. What should we be getting from Steed Park on an annual basis?
Based upon the fact that there are approximately a hundred and eighteen tournament days every year, this is one of the biggest tournament venues that we've, we've seen, and I've worked with over two hundred and fifty park districts on multiple different types of operations. But seeing that a tournament, you know, when, when usually in these, you get like a summertime if you're in Chicago and you get, you know, maybe forty, fifty days. So to know that we've got a hundred and eighteen potential days with about ten, you know, ten-ish per day on a tournament day would, would be a number to kind of shoot for. So if you kind of do the math, you're looking at a seven-digit operation here and with a lot of opportunity.
Wait, seven-digit? That's with a decimal point or with?
That's correct. That's, yeah. Especially that we have a gate, you know, we have gate as well, because it's not just concessions. The gate is part of this, too.
So where's million-dollar operation there?
That's correct.
And at the, at the pier, what, what do you think we should be getting there?
The, my challenge with the pier is coming in answering your question in revenue. I think in, in my experience with these type of operations, eight, eight, eight to ten percent gross is a pretty normal, you know, request for these type of things when you're going out to RFP and looking at these type of operations. So that basically doesn't cover, that doesn't leave a whole lot when you're talking about the utilities are covered by and other aspects to this and cleaning and making sure the pier is, you know, perfect and all of that. So, but that's, that's a rent that's pretty, pretty standard in the industry between eight to twelve. So we usually say that ten is a pretty good number.
And should that be open seven days a week?
A little bit of it varies. I mean, let's be the operator for just a second, right? And if it's forty degrees or forty-five degrees and you're opening and there's five fishermen's out there, that's a pretty tough day to be open. But I think there's probably a stretch here into the season that would certainly be nine months, you know, into the, into the spring, into the fall, and not just be a summer piece for, because part of it is you, it, you're just creating, you know, that type of, of year round or closer to year-round experience. So I think that there's definitely an opportunity to expand it between certainly the nine months and maybe even twelve months with the weekends.
And in both cases, what would you do with the menu?
So at, let me start at the pier. The pier is a little bit difficult because, you know, to follow all the health department rules with hand sinks and prep sinks and things that we need to get out there, along with the challenge of delivery, getting out to that location is not an easy, easy, you know, situation. So I give a lot of kudos for, for the operator there and what she's, what she's doing there and, and pulling that off. It's just my thing about these is consolidating the menus, making them a lot simpler. Do what you do really well. You know, if you're gonna, if you've got twenty items, make it ten, and do those ten that they're all an eight plus, instead of trying to be a little bit too spread out. Focus on one thing, do it really well, especially in a, in a such an isolated, yet captive location. Steed, similar that we want to do what we, you know, we were talking about, you know, a, a fresh grill concept and, and doing, you know, fresh chicken tenders instead of frozen. Just my whole thing about my belief in concessions and what we're seeing, the impact is that when you go with quality products, then the expectation at a ballpark is like, meh, it should be okay. And all of a sudden, you're splitting out fresh things and fresh grills and putting on a show and smell marketing and all these things, these things explode. And people start to see, I don't want to have to have dinner. Let's go eat here. Or if you're at your tournament, it's ten in the morning or eleven in the morning, we just finished, you're gonna have to drive four, fifteen minutes to a restaurant, drive fifteen minutes back. You're not gonna have a parking place when you get back. It's gonna be really tough with your kids. Just stay, and now we're giving them a reason to stay. When you give them a reason to stay, that's how the seven digits occur.
Wow. All right. Any, and your thoughts on T Street and North Beach?
So, yeah, there, I mean, and what's really, you know, in doing this for so long and, and being in the restaurant business for forty years and consulting for more than thirty of those years, and the seven hundred facilities that we've worked with, not nationwide but worldwide and seeing what we have, I in my years have never seen any park district that's had the ability to have two operations sitting on some of the most beautiful and crowded beaches in the country. And here they sit, one dormant at North Beach, the other one, you know, right off of T Street, and the potential for those is super, super exciting. And I, and I, I get it that, you know, allowing outsiders to come in, not outsiders, local community restaurateurs to come in and be the operators for that is definitely an option. However, the amount of potential revenue that's on the table for this is tremendous. And where we sit as a city to get, you know, to, to incur, to have revenues available to us for, for doing, you know, such wonderful things for the community, here's an opportunity for we can, you know, get our feet wet at, at Steed and really get into this business and see how we do. We're not in competition with anything but ourselves, because there's nothing within four miles of us. And then taking it from there to see if these operations at T Street and North Beach make sense for the city to take on themselves. You know, that's, that's the direction we see with this.
Final question, I'll shut up. The, who do you, like, at, at Steed Park, what entity do you see operating this million-dollar business? How would we do that?
Here's what's really great, with, in getting to meet with Samantha's team, and we had, we had three good days with her. We went through, you know, multiple operations, and we sat down and really talked with them, and, and we have two things that have occurred. I used to manage this, this splash at, at Water Park up in San Dimas, not in San Dimas, sorry, in La Mirada. And one of the entities that worked there is in, in your community, in your city, works for your city. So he was the person actually that I trained when we left La Mirada after being there for seven years and working with the city there. So that's one person. And then there's another person who's got multiple years of restaurant experience as well in the park and rec team that can take this on. And I was describing the concept where it's Steed, and she's like, oh, we can handle this. This is well within our wheelhouse. And then with a turnkey capability of us giving you those tools to, you know, which, how do we spec this and getting, as I call the McDonald's manual to operate, I think there'll be great success for your, we have the team already in-house to do this. We don't have to search for it.
We would use city employees to do this, you say?
That's correct. You don't need any additional FTEs at this, at this, at this juncture, and just bringing on some part-time people to support the operations, and you can be ready to go as early as July fourth.
And then the last question I, I said, I have one more last question. If that's okay. Did you do an, did you do an assessment on, on the kitchen equipment and, you know, whether three-part sinks? Do, do we have, are, are we good from a serve-safe perspective, and do we have the right equipment in place in each one of our venues?
Good, that's a good question. So we'll start with, we'll start with Steed. The nice part about that is that's the least amount of equipment that we need. There's, we don't have an outdoor grill right now, so we would need to purchase that, a couple other things to support it to get through health. There's probably a, you know, thirty thousand dollar nut there, which for in the restaurant business, that's not asking too, too much. T Street's a little bit more, that we've got, and we have to do some negotiations, obviously, with the current vendor, and there's equipment there that's all of hers. We don't have, we have a minimal amount of equipment, right, Samantha? That's not ours, or is that hers?
That's correct. It, it varies. The, most of the T Street equipment is owned by the operator, although some of, like, the hood system, things like that.
So there's this, the, I call the not, you know, the hoods, the hoods in place, that's really good. The sinks are there. She's, that's would stay there anyway. It would just be defining what the concept is. I always say menu drives design, right? So I'm gonna design my concept around the menu that we're gonna come up with. And then north is a little bit more equipment than that. But again, if you look at the fact that there's scheduled thirty-two thousand people that walk by T Street and twenty-five thousand people that walk by North Beach for ninety days a year, and we can get a, if we got, if we got fifty cents from them, we're gonna pay for our equipment back in about sixty days. If we can get it.
We have ancil systems in place there?
Yes, yeah, there are full head systems in those locations.
We have conducted the proper maintenance on those ancil systems and?
There's some work that needs to be done, but with the core of that in, you know, just being able to update those and get your ancil in the right place is, is a pretty minor expense.
Then maybe that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Samantha.
Mayor Proten, can I just ask, that was talking about the North Beach concession stand, your question. Okay. That's one of the, do you have any questions?
Not really. I mean, I have a couple points, not questions. We covered a lot of information when we heard from Mike and Samantha the other day, a very comprehensive presentation. So I, I won't go into, you know, the questions that got answered there. Just some, some points as we get through what we're gonna vote on.
Okay, so I'll ask Councilmember Ferguson, do you have any comment?
Thanks, I do, Mayor Ward. For Samantha, you know, we had a food concessionaire, a couple that had a lease with the North Beach concession, and they found mold. They brought in somebody to take a look and inspection and didn't do the mold remediation, because it's about a ten thousand dollar cost, and it was an as-is contract. Now, going forward, it's a shame, because they live right there at North Beach, had a lot of pride and had great enthusiasm for making that work and be a good experience, because it's been closed so long. So my question for you, I have two. Are we, the city, planning to do the mold remediation on that building? Could be pretty hard to lease. It's really a health and safety matter, right? And then, secondly, why was it closed for so many years? And it seems that it deteriorated, you know, from the conditions there at the beach and being neglected. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Ferguson. So the, the North Beach concessionaire that was previously there, that, that agreement was in as-is condition when they signed it. And, and so they, they found mold after going through the building, after signing their lease. I was not involved in the execution of that agreement, but that is my understanding of it. And Mike can actually speak to that as well as, as the reasons why the city, it wouldn't be advisable to, to fund the ten thousand dollars for that particular agreement. It just didn't make sense based on the percentage and the, the terms of the agreement within, within that specific contract. So the, the, Eric, he might be able to speak to why it was empty and vacant before that. I know it was, it kind of passed through a different couple of staff hands.
Absolutely, Councilmember Ferguson. So if you recall, the previous leaseholder was Hardee's, and they opened it up, and I can't even remember the year, but shortly after they opened, they went dormant for a period of time, and while they still had the lease, the lease didn't dictate that they needed to be open seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days of the year. So they went through, Hardee's went through a bankruptcy for their, their mother company, which was located in Canada, and eventually, over a long course of time, walked away from the lease from the city. And that, that's what prompted us then to begin the next RFP process, which has yielded the concessionaire that you're referring to for North Beach, who then, based on the mold discovery after their inspections and the signature of lease, decided to not pursue that lease agreement and asked to be exited because of the cost that they would have to incur for that.
Thank you for the answers on that. Do, do you know when the Hardee's lease had concluded? When did it expire? Like, did it sit vacant for two or three years? Oh, and also I wanted to know, was, I haven't even taken a look, and I walk the trail a lot. For some reason, I haven't checked. Does the character counts mural? Did that ever get executed?
We, we've been working with the Rotary, the Sunrise Rotary Club, who initially put the mural up. They, they COVID kind of impacted their ability to work with the high school students.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, so we, it might have been vacant for maybe a couple of years, then, we're thinking, approximately. Okay, yeah, that's unfortunate. Well, we'll see. I mean, I'd be surprised if someone wants to lease it, knowing that it's in that condition, so.
Can I speak to that a little bit, though? Because here's the thing, if, if you look at saying I've got to put forty or fifty thousand in equipment to get what I need out of there, a ten thousand dollar fee to basically get my buy-in to put myself on a beach, I'm not getting a rental on a street that's risky. I'm at a beach and I know, I call these captive market situations, right? Right, where they're not locked in by any means, but there's not a super convenient place to get a water that's within two hundred yards of where we are. And so, taking on to say, well, I don't wanna, uh, pay a ten thousand dollar fee upfront to be at a beach, to me is like, that's just part of opening.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mike. And some people, some people are in that position. Obviously, we, we lost a really great couple that, um, didn't find that to be physically prudent for them in, in terms of investment, so I guess it'll depend on the person. We'll have to see how it goes. So, thank you, thanks for your input, sir.
Okay, Mike, uh, I have a, a question. All of these appear to be concession type, except for one, you know, where they serve food and, and all of that. And I'm, I'm just questioning on the bike rental shop. Are what you're saying in here, going out, uh, for an RFP, you're saying depending on the type of services provided, are you proposing turning that into some type of a, a food service for that shop?
I think that there's, uh, let's take something simple like a shave ice hut, right? And where it's where you've got enough square footage to meet everything in there. There, there could be an opportunity for something, just a small restaurant concept. There's a certain amount of square footage that's always dedicated to meeting health department rules. And that part usually takes about three to four hundred square feet. So that leaves you with enough square footage to make a smoothie operation or a, you know, something small. You can't be a full, probably burger stand or protein place because there's just not enough room to do that. But there is room beyond just a bike location that could be at that location, you know, and something in those type of entities, even a coffee shop. You know, those things. I mean, uh, coffee has very limited time, so, um, although Starbucks proves that everybody's there at every minute of the day. But I, I always see that as a morning concept and a late-night concept. Um, shave ice has its limitations as well, so, um, there's challenges with those, but when they're prime in season, they can do very well, as well as a bike shop did.
Did, uh, staff talk to you about what's currently going into North Beach? That, uh, the Miramar Theater there is being renovated as an, an event center, but the bowling alley is going to be several restaurants. Walk-up, uh, I don't know whether they're gonna have those type of services, but, um, there's gonna be different restaurants where it's serve yourself. You go in and order, and then you can go outside and sit on tables.
It's like a food court.
Say that again.
Food court concept.
Yes, it's kind of like a food court. So, um, the, the thing that we were doing, that council was doing with the, the bike shop was trying to encourage people to, uh, start biking. And it's along our bike trail that goes through our city. I can't remember what that's called right now. It's Pacific Bike Trail, something like that, that goes through our city, and it kind of fixes tires, and it's the only bathroom right now that's there that all the bike users can use, because we, uh, are, we, we made our bike trail go to connect to Dana Point. And so this is kind of in the middle there. Um, so I was just kind of wondering that, um, I think council will have to consider what we want to use it for, but I just wanted to know what kind of food source you were thinking about. Because I think we have to take into account what's, what's going to happen in North Beach. You know, and then if we did something there, what would we be doing to the concessionaire on the beach? Uh, you know, did you look at that kind of, um, uh, whether they'd be competing with each other?
Well, here's the thing about being on the beach or near the beach. I'm in a swimsuit and I'm sandy, and I want a water. I'm not too excited, and then I don't really wanna go into something cold. Meaning that, um, if I'm in my swimsuit like that, and even if it's just a hundred yards, I still have to put a coat, you know, put something on, probably a little bit more than I have, and then it's gonna be really cold walking into that air-conditioned space. Now, that might feel good for a little bit, but it's my experience with this, where I've had concession operations in a water park or near a water park or a beach operation, and then I've got something close by. There's room for everybody, is kind of what I say with this. But there's the convenience of, you can be laying on the sand ten yards from me and get a water in about thirty seconds. Or a smoothie, or something else that I might be offering. You've still gotta get in and get your shoes on, because that parking lot's hot, and you gotta have, you know, just, you have to make a little bit more hassle, so. There's room for everybody, because that's also a customer that more than likely won't walk the hundred yards anyway. I'm not losing that customer. In this case, I'm actually servicing that customer.
Okay. All right, so, um, Madam Clerk, I just have a question. Do we have to open any public comments for this before we deliberate?
You already heard the, the comments.
That's right, we just, okay, thank you. Um, that was on the snack shot. So, um, council, let's talk about, uh, deliberation, I think, um, from what we heard from the concessionaire at, um, the pier. You know, very supported, um, she supports her, you know, uh, option A, renegotiating that. And I think that's what staff recommended. Or, can we take one each, each one? Would you like to do it that way?
I think that's the easiest.
Okay, it, it's just easiest for the, the public to follow it. Um, so the first one is, uh, North Beach concession, let's do that first.
First one's Steed.
Uh, my staff report, I think it says North Beach.
No, on staff report it is, on the first page.
Thank you. Okay, so I was talking about the actual staff report. Let's look at the agenda, that's fine, we can take it that way. We'll take it, uh, Richard Steed is first. Um, uh, I think it's very, um, enlightening what our consultant has said for Steed Park.
Steed, yeah.
So, is anyone in opposition of, of going, uh, in-house on that and having staff look at, uh, options for operating that?
I am, from, from me, I'm, I'm going to support it, but I think we're going to need to have the appropriate insurance in place. Because su- suddenly we're a food, food service operation, and also claims from, uh, in regards to foodborne illness or alleged foodborne illness. So, I think, I think we're at the JPI on notice. Mr. Sun, what do you think about that?
Completely concur, and I know Samantha is already pre-gaming the fact that we'll need to work with the health department and a num- number of other agencies, as well as our JPI, to ensure that we have the appropriate indemnity for that operation.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to see all our food service operators. Mike, correct me if I'm wrong here. I'd like to see all the food service employees get serve-safe qualified, and there's, there's a cost to that.
It's pretty minimal, but yes.
The, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm with, with Steed, I'm good with option, option A.
Yeah, and I think that we're sitting on a goldmine, uh, there, and, uh, I was hesitant a little bit too on the in-house operations because I'm thinking rec staff's gonna be grilling, you know, it just sort of seems, you know, a little bit out there. But I think Mike's gonna provide some guidance, and also the fact that we get that, that gate charge, that does seem like something the city should be getting and not some private concessionaire. I mean, that, that's sort of paying us back for the investment we made in the park, so.
And maintenance.
Yeah, and all the maintenance to keep it up. So I, I'm gonna agree with approving the proposal to have, uh, have staff uh, man that operation.
Okay, so I'm seeing agreement on, Councilmember Ferguson's nodding, I'm seeing agreement for Steed Park.
Good, Mayor, if I may, um, I just wanna make sure, I know the report said part-time, but the staff recommendation says approve in-house concession. I just wanna make sure we're not adding FTEs so that, you know, we, we pay attention to that. So, we don't have benefit costs and pension costs, so we're certain we can do that with part-time staff, um, Eric?
Yeah, I, I do, if I can, uh, Councilmember Ferguson, um, but the, the plan is, we do have full-time staff currently, um, staffed that, that manage Steed Park operations, um, whether that's the field rentals or the user groups. Um, that would be a very natural transition to slip that under their wing. Um, they also already manage the hourly part-timers that are out there on weekends or, and the evenings as well. So, um, we would just expand our part-time hourly labor force, if you will.
And I, I might have missed it, do we still, um, will we still allow the patrons of the park to have the dollar of the two-dollar charge, gate charge? Are we still going to do that to incentivize they purchase food and beverage?
Yes, and Mike could speak to that as well. That, that's a very standard, uh, practice. I know you have boys that are in sports, and absolutely, there's venue fees and gate fees, um, and, and it's absolutely gonna go back to the, the, um, operations at Steed, that would be the anticipation. I do wanna say, um, you know, any fees that we adjust will come to the council for final approval, so you guys will get that blessing.
Okay, so I'm seeing concession, uh, consensus on number one. Um, Steed Park, number two is direct staff to release an RFP for, uh, new food and beverage concessionaires or, or to operate pop-up restaurants or concessions at T Street and North Beach. Is there any comment on that? Um, my only comment to the council is North Beach is, uh, that stretch of beach is a little underutilized on its own. And I happen to know that we did go to RFP a few times for North Beach, and it just wasn't successful. I, we didn't even get a contract. We had Rubies come in and they got the contract, and then they backed out into the season. And I don't know of anyone after that.
Uh, that's a great point, Mayor. I think one of the benefits of having Mike and his team is we're gonna be using his network of, of service providers as the audience to distribute those RFPs, and so we're gonna really broaden our search from candidate standpoint for the operations.
And I'm, I'm concerned about it to North Beach, uh, becoming a, a Mecca, a magnet, I should say, for, for homeless and becoming undesirable to those walking, walking by it. And I don't, I would.
I think, um, you know, in the absence of North Beach being, anyone being there, you know, it's, it's quiet. Um, we certainly saw that with the beach club when everything was under construction. The only thing that was open in that area was, uh, the, the casino to weddings and our bike shop. That, that was it for North Beach, so, um, you know, we certainly will try to revitalize that. But, Mike, just the comments of North Beach, you know, there's not a lot of people sitting on that beach. Now, possibly if that concession became something, you know, maybe that would, that would encourage it, so I'm, I'll be interested in that. But we've had problems with that, um, and, and because we have North Beach under revitalization, revitalization, maybe North Beach will become more, uh, active at the beach. Um, so that, that's my only, you know, great, we're gonna go out for RFP for that, but knowing that it, it's gonna be challenging, uh, for that location.
You nailed it, yeah, that, that's just a, that, well, as a beach, it's not that, uh, populated. It is a, a very popular launching place for, for the, for the hikers on the beach trail, right? Like, the beach trail for T Street and North Beach really is, to me, is the key, um, especially at North Beach. So, um, I, I could, I mean, obviously we work on this, I'd like to see what comes in. I think it needs to be more of a sort of coffee breakfast, sort of that kind of thing where you, you know, you get something where you start your walk rather than something you might get at the beach. Um, and I, I think more, maybe in order to, to, uh, attract more people, we should raise the pilot program from one year to eighteen months. Talked about that, to get, just so that it's not such a quick hit for people, it might, might scare off a few potential uh, applicants by having it just be a one-year thing, so I, I wonder what people think about eighteen months as the pilot program, gives them two seasons.
Yeah, because I don't see wanting to buy any equipment and stock up.
Mayor, if I may, I just got communication from Jonathan Lightfoot, our economic development officer, I know Samantha's aware of this as well. We already have ten local restaurants that have submitted interest in either concessionaire as well. So not only with Mike's audience, service providers, we are probably gonna start off with at least ten restaurants that want to submit a proposal for one of the two concessionaires.
Okay, so we're, we're talking still North Beach?
Yes.
Oh, and T Street, thank you.
That's great. They may not know that they have to do the, the mold, uh, so, that, that may, uh.
That'll be in the negotiation.
It'll be in the negotiation, be term a little bit. I do think that the eighteen month gives a little more certainty to, uh, uh, you know, an outfit that's gonna, uh, you know, gonna try their lot with either of these locations.
I think that's a great point, because we're looking at upwards to forty, fifty thousand dollar investment. And they're, they're going to, wanna have.
And to that point as well, you're gonna get two summer cycles out of that eighteen months, which is also very beneficial to the concessionaires.
How soon, how soon could some, Mike, how soon could someone get open, uh, on T Street or North Beach?
Probably with permitting, um, because that's really the, that really varies by city. Some of this goes super smooth and some of this takes a little bit of time, but I'd probably say, um, you know, at least ninety days to get everything through, because you've got, you've got health department things, and also purchasing equipment right now with COVID is, is, uh, we have many lead times that are running six weeks and some are running fourteen. So, um, that could be a little bit of a holdup as well.
So it might be till August or beginning of September, till we have something in there.
Yep, little different with, with Steed on that, because there's not much equipment that's needed there, and most of it's very straightforward, so. But, uh, the other would need a little bit more to do that.
Okay, so I'm not seeing any other suggestion except, uh, direct staff to look into eighteen months. You know, and certainly if you find someone that wants a year, um, but, you know, I don't think we're going to be able to do that. North Beach is gonna be a hard sell. Um, so number three, direct staff to return to council at the completion of the pilot program, um, to evaluate that. So you'd, you'd come back in maybe some a year, may, and maybe some eighteen months? Um, I'm looking at Mr. Sun, or actually I should talk to Samantha. You know, if we give him eighteen months, you'd come back at the end of that. But when you do these, do you come back to council for these contracts, or is staff just, go ahead and tell?
Yes, yes, we would do that. After we go through the RFP process, we would come back for a contract award and, um, and certainly I, and I, I will be working closely with Jonathan Lightfoot on this as well, because I, I do think it has an incredible business development opportunity also. So we would come back.
They're gonna come back to us anyway, Councilmember Duncan. Um, so we'll, we'll find out what, what the market says, uh, about those two concessionaires. Um, number four, uh, what everyone's here tonight for is, um, direct staff to release an RFP for the operation of the bait tackle shop. I think we're looking at option A. Anyone has any, uh, Councilmember Ferguson?
Yeah, I, I like that option to nega- to nega- renegotiate the new terms with, uh.
Okay, so I think we have consensus on that item. Um, the next item on the agenda.
Just to note on that too, I mean, it, it is different than these other locations. It really has those challenges, like Mike said. So this is not a location that we're looking to be a massive revenue generator. It's more like a, a location that provides community and is, you know, sort of reliable, people know is gonna be, which is what we heard.
Right.
Let's keep Becky there.
She's willing to renegotiate, and definitely it's a negotiation, so they can, they can figure that out, and it's gonna come back to us anyway. The last one is the only one that I have kind of a question on, because I'm not really sure about whether this building, it's gonna be like the other one, if it could really be something. So, you know, I'm not against going to an RFP, but I will tell you that previous councils, we had that bike shop there. Um, he's the president of the Orange County Bike Coalition, and he's helping us with, uh, with, uh, bike safety right now. Um, we had that there to try to get the beach trail going and our, and our bike lane. I would be more for renegotiating with him and trying to get that. But I, you know, if council wants to go look at and see what could go in there, you know, I'm not against that either, but, um, I just know that the bike shop is, uh, it's for public safety and why we had it there is trying to get bicycles, bicycles going, and I think that's kind of what he did, and he was alone there for so many years, and he actually operates where he provides the bathrooms for everyone, because it is a, it is a city building, um, and we ask for that to be open. But, you know, if you, it, it's up to you. I would rather renegotiate it, because I think a bike shop is a good use for that. But if you wanna look at what it can make.
Do you think appropriate due diligence would be looking at at other possibilities, not necessarily with, with the intent of, of, of making it something else? But I think it'd be appropriate to look at what else could be there and what kind of revenue we could draw from an, an alternative there.
So, tell me, Mike.
It's a good point. Mike, Mike didn't review that location, so we could have him check that out.
Um, without going to an RFP, do we have to go in RFP or to review that? Is that just standard on this, that we go out and we get proposals and see what wants to go in there? Or do we look at, you know, I'm just concerned that North Beach wasn't looked at uh, enough of what's actually going in, and there's, there's actually another, uh, place going in across from this. I don't know what has happened to it, but, um, what is that other place that was going in?
Deli Hut.
Right, Beach Deli Hut, what has happened?
They, they've gone through a couple of different architects, but as I understand it, more recently, they've landed with a new architect and they're beginning the process. So we should see some activity and some construction as well.
So there's another full-service, uh, coffee breakfast going in there?
But also the, the restaurant that opened, beautiful place, the.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Landers now.
Landers, Landers.
Yeah. So.
Right.
So there was a new restaurant that opened there, you know, the previous restaurant went out of business during COVID. Now it appears there's a new restaurant there, Landers. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I'm just, you know, I don't know, is it, is it a really good thing to have two concessionaires right there opening more? But, you know, I'm not against looking at it. I just think we need to be concerned about losing the actual bike operation that we've started that out of our old, um, operation building for, um, what was that for? Metrolink Station? Cause it was kind of a hut, like just to get out of the rain, I think.
Just to clarify, I just got updates from Jonathan. So that, uh, we just received plans yesterday for Beach Hut, lunch only, not coffee.
Okay.
And then Landers is targeting to opening this month.
So if, you know, council wants to go, I, you know, my question, Mike, is, is, is how do we determine what that should be or what the market will bear? And I guess that's an RFP. Am I answered?
It's a good question of what, you know, uh, it's a good, see what's, see what's out there. I mean, someone might look at that as something completely different than what we're even thinking of. So that's what I like about the, and remember there's a statement in the RFPs, we have a right to refuse every single proposal. So, um, if we don't see that, if we see as something that's, that's going to be too competitive or, you know, whatever in nature, the money's just not right or however this works. So, um, we can't get it in this year. I don't think we can get open in time for an RFP process through a city situation. So we have, we have really a year to, to get this sorted out.
Wait, that's a good point. Okay. So I, I would be interested, um, but when it comes back to us, I really want to evaluate whether more food, we'll see what, what comes in, more food is better or would council want, uh, you know, the bike rental and encouraging the, you know, the bike use.
Yeah. And the bike rental company, they can, they can bid still. It doesn't knock them out. They can submit with the RFP process as well.
Okay. So, um, I think that's our last one. That's number five. And I think we're all in agreement.
I would like to revisit the, the pier bait and tackle location.
Okay.
What, I'm, I'm going to be a contrarian here. People said a lot of wonderful things, um, about that operation and what it means to them. And that's important. I think we have to look at that. We also have to look as, as a, as a council, as a body, on what's going to make us.
Right.
I, you know, I would like to, you know, and Ms. Gensher, um, is, is welcome to, to bid on any of these other concessions as well. This is not about her or these, these, um, first, the supporters that she had that they were here, that, that what they had to say was, was moving. But at the end of the day, I want to look at making money. And, um, I think we need to look at the possibility of approaching the fishermen and, and seeing if they could, they could operate there. And I'm, I'm, you know, I want, I want to see something, you know, when you look at the synergy that could be created by, by the fishermen, uh, operating there with, with the payroll they have and their ability to, to move product from the fishermen out there. I mean, I, I think, I think we certainly have to look at that. In my off base.
Um, I, I think it's a, it's a good point, Gene, but I just don't think with, you don't get the traffic out there the same way you get at the base of the pier, you know? So I just don't, I don't know that, um, there's going to be a lot more people purchasing things out at the end of the pier that wouldn't be purchasing them with the fishermen at the, the basic pier already. I think the snack shack is, is serving a different function, you know, it's, it's, it's the fish, it's people that are fishing. It's, it's sort of key, different kind of foods. Uh, and again, I think it's, it's not, it's just not, I don't know if it's a revenue generator like the other ones we're looking at. It's more of, I think what we want there is consistency, reliability, uh, high quality, um, friendliness, you know? That, that's what people I think are going to look for at the end of the pier, not, not the fish and chips they can get from fishermen at the base of the pier.
Would, would it be, would it be appropriate though for us to approach the fishermen and say, how much money can you make out there for us? Would that be appropriate?
I think, you know, I'm trying to provide some solutions. And so I agree, we've heard some pretty compelling comments as it relates to the current operator and the services they provide as it relates to the community. And obviously fishermen's is also a known presence. But to Councilmember Duncan's point, the question is, does the dynamics work for fishermen's in regards to this concessionaire? I might suggest to the council that the city sits down with both the current operator and fishermen's and sees what kind of proposals we can come back with both, uh, as it relates to, I'm hearing consistent service, revenue and serving the public. And so with those kind of principal elements being looked at in both proposals and then come back to the council with what options are available with both operators, uh, the council would make the final decision.
If I may, Mayor Ward, I just wanted to thank you, um, mention, uh, I liked what, uh, Councilmember Duncan said, you know? Rebecca, she's just loved out there at the pier, the fishermen. She provides the bait, the tackle, uh, wonderful souvenirs. It's just an experience. It's a little shop and I, I, I love going to the fishermen's, uh, restaurant as well. And they have the galley already, right? Adjacent to, um, their restaurant that they open several months of the year. So I'd like to still allow, um, Rebecca to have this opportunity. She has such great relationships and it provides that wonderful experience. People drive here from, uh, we got some emails, actually a lot of emails, not just some, but they, they come here, um, to see her and eat her food. She has wonderful burritos and, and, um, and just a lovely personality. And I'd like to see her stay, um, at, with a negotiated lease, but we have the fishermen look into that. Then you just have a monopoly there on the pier and I, I'm not supportive of that.
So we're not. Money we can make.
Well, I think, um, you know, it's a, it's, it's a conversation that we could definitely have with the fishermen, but, um, I think I would rather see this concessionaire, you know, they, they have all that equipment. Uh, I don't think this lease has been a long time. And there was equipment purchased and, uh, she took it over, I believe.
Correct. So currently, yes, currently we're in a month-to-month with this concessionaire. And that equipment is obviously it was Scott Shipley's equipment originally, and then it obviously was passed down to the current operator.
But I understand she's paying for it. So, you know, it's an investment into it. Um, I think if you look long-term, if, you know, she's going to do it and she's willing, um, they're talking about a five-year lease. Uh, if she's willing to give that up eventually or run the five years, I think then the fishermen could adequately plan to maybe take that over. I mean, it's, it's a compromise, but, um, definitely I don't think she should agree at the current price. Jean, I think we can get more and they're going to have to negotiate that, but they're willing to do it. So maybe that's a compromise that, um, we wait till that concessionaire is available again, and then we approach the fishermen. But we can certainly see now, um, what they're willing to do, but I think we should stick with the current concessionaire that we have. If they're willing to come up, you know, if, if, uh, Mr. Shipley, we were in the lease with him and he up and left in like with two weeks' notice. So, um, I'm not saying that's going to happen, but it could happen. Um, and if it did, then maybe we should look more long-term.
If I hear the council correctly, um, I'm hearing that priority number one is to sit back down with the current operator and see if we can't negotiate a better lease. Obviously higher revenue and more hours of service and operations to the public. And then alternatively, if things don't seem to be working out with that, touch, test the waters with fishermen's to see what kind of opportunities are available with the fishermen's.
I think that's a good long-term solution. Um, but we definitely want, with the service that we're hearing is out there, we want it more. We're looking at like maybe nine months, but that's something that could be negotiated.
I think, you know, yes, I know, and Mike can maybe chime in. I think, you know, that pier is active seven days a week, 365 days out of the year. Whether it's the fishermen's or obviously during the sunny season. So I think one of the things that staff would be looking at is a, a significant amount of hours. Our previous concessionaires did not have set hours. There was flexibility. But I think, you know, after having Mike's company look at this, we see that there could be more opportunities there in other concessionaires. So understood.
Right. You know, we are, we're, it's beautiful in San Clemente unless there is a storm going through and boy, that, at the end of the pier, it can get quite windy. So, uh, you know, it's, it's, uh, hold on to your hat time. Uh, I don't know what we can have there in, during the storm times, but.
Well, I give Mayor Protem James credit for, uh, with all the comments, uh, be, be brave enough to, to, to step up with that proposal. And the fishermen's is a first-class operation, right? Like sure, I'm sure they could pull, pull something off. But I think with the fact that we have a, the snack shack doing the bait and the tackle, the other things too, that I think we should give, uh, Becky and her team a chance to, uh, see what they can do with a, with a more revenue generating contract.
I'm, I'm fine with that. If, if we're talking about setting some parameters on, on.
With the service.
With service, uh, menu, uh, menu enhancement, um, more hours. I'm going to be fine with that. Um, but I just want an alternative in the event that she can't, you know, she can't commit to what that RFP is going to look like.
And we'll work with Mike and his company on kind of the frame for, framework for what we believe should be working there from a, from a service standpoint before we engage with the current lease holder.
Okay. So, um, you have heard on all five items, the comments from the council. Do we need to make any motions on this? We're just giving recommendations, are we not? Do you need a vote?
You can take one vote on.
Globally?
Decisions that you made.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve, um, the recommendations that we have, we have made?
Second.
Uh, motion by Mayor Protem James and a second by Councilmember Duncan.
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem James?
Aye.
And Mayor Ward?
Aye. Okay. Thank you. Um, we've already closed, do we close? But we took public comment on that already. I don't think we can, can we open it? I don't think we can open it again. We, we went into liberation. We can't.
Oral communications.
You could wait to oral communications. All right. Thank you.
Need to put in a card.
Right. We need to put in a card. Thank you. All right.
So going back to item nine A, uh, that's the warrant register and the payroll register.
Council, entertain a motion.
Excuse me, Mayor Ward.
Go ahead, Councilmember Ferguson.
I'd like to, um, poll, I'm not going to talk about them. I'm just not approving them. So I'm just going to poll separately, um, warrant register, uh, two, four, nine, just the first line, number two, four, nine, uh, wire transfer two, four, nine through two, four, three, two. And wire transfer number two, four, three, three through two, four, three, four. And I'm just pulling them and I'm just going to be concise rather than go through the line items. I'm not approving those because there are numerous consultant fees totaling about forty-five thousand and I didn't approve those contracts because they didn't come to council. Thank you.
All right. So council, all intend to entertain a motion to approve these.
A motion to approve the warrant, uh, and payroll register.
Thank you. Uh, motion by Councilmember Duncan to approve both warrant registers and a second by Mayor Protem James.
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson?
No.
Mayor Protem James?
Aye.
And Mayor Ward?
Aye.
Here is three to one, Councilmember Ferguson voting no.
Nine B.
Oh, excuse me, Mayor Ward. Did, did we want to make a motion to approve the first wire transfer? There were three.
We approved both registers and you voted no.
Oh, there's three.
There was, we approved all of them, the entire, the warrant registers and the payroll register.
Oh, you did? Okay. I, I polled two of them. So I thought we voted just on those two. Okay. So we, we approved all three. Okay. Or you did. I, I, I voted no on the two though. I wanted to vote yes on the first one.
All right.
That's, that's why I polled them.
So you need to, you need to say that you would like, uh, a separate, but they are removed.
I'll make, well, no, we actually only, I heard we only approved the two that I polled. We voted on the one, ones that I polled. Okay. And then there was one that I didn't poll that I was supporting.
When you poll things, that is for the consent calendar and this is new business.
This is, this is new business. Yeah. So I, I approved the first one, not the last two. City Attorney, would you like to, um, opine on that? I, I polled two that I didn't want to approve, but I wanted to approve the first one, warrant register two, four, two, six.
There was no second to, uh, what you said, and there was a motion to approve them. So, and you voted no.
City Attorney, would you, so I can't vote on one of them? I have to vote on, I'll have, have to say no on all three? I've done this before.
I've lost the thread. If, if you want to tee it back up, I'd suggest that you, you consider a motion to reconsider and then.
That's what we'd have to do at this point.
Oh, we're doing it different this time. It's fine. Cause I, I've done this before.
You have to make a motion to bifurcate. You don't pull things. You only pull from the.
It's okay. I'm not going to worry about it. Thanks. We'll move on.
Calendar. Excuse me. So Mayor Ferguson, are you giving up on that?
Yeah, no on all three. It's fine. Let's just move along. Thanks.
Thank you. So item, uh, nine B. And, uh, this is initiation of a general plan amendment for the removal of Los Petronas Parkway. I would like to make a motion that, um, we continue that. We had continued it from the, uh, meeting of April 6th. We're currently in negotiations, uh, in a working group with, uh, Rancho Mission V O, OCTA, TCA and the county. So, um, I would like to put off, uh, agendizing this to, you need a date certain? Madam Clerk, right?
It would be helpful.
How about, uh, the June 1st, um, city council meeting, uh, the first meeting in June for the city council. It's not on June 1st. So we go through May.
I think it is June 1st.
Is it?
June 1st.
That was a good guess.
So I'm, I'm going to support you, Madam Mayor, on, on this, but you know, one of my concerns about the Los Petronas Parkway, it's a bit of a pig in the poke for us. We, you know, we, 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 we're not too sure if there are going to be intersections on that road. Will there be traffic lights, speed limit, uh, the, you know, the, what level of funding is the TCA going to have? What level of funding is the county going to have? I will support you on this, but I will continue to be a, a true skeptic as it relates to Los Petronas Parkway. It's a little bit like the kindergarten rhyme of the foot bones connected to the ankle bone and the ankle bones connecting to the shin bone. I'm a little concerned that Los Petronas, what Los Petronas Parkway is going to look like. And, but I will argue that on, on the first of June, in the meantime, I will support, support your, I'll second your motion.
I appreciate that. We, we don't want to take it completely off because, uh, TCA has, uh, made some comments about, uh, possibly looking at that, which, um, no one else, no other transportation agency or any party, the county or Rancho Mission V O or us want to discuss that. Um, but because it's being, you know, talked about, we are trying to get to a cooperative agreement on that. If we can reach that, then, um, we have a seat, we already have a seat at the table with the cooperative agreement, but, um, we are concerned about those comments and we, we want to see that settled. Um, and those issues, uh, not brought up anymore for San Clemente. So, um.
If I could just make one point on that, Mayor, Mayor Ward, as a, as a counterpoint to Mayor Protem James, but, um, I understand that many of the, many of the senators from outside the area who supported us on the legislation wanted to see San Clemente's good for, good faith efforts to find that local solution, which would include a Los Petronas Parkway extension. So I think it's important that we at least keep that ball in the air and show that we're trying to work with the OCTA and the ranch and the county to, uh, to, to do something that works for San Clemente. It's just not a freeway. So, you know, I think we do need to kind of keep that option out there and show that we're, we're trying to, to be good faith partners, unlike the TCA.
We are. We just, um, we want to be very sure that we're not setting up and teeing up a road, uh, straight from that. And we're, we're trying, we're asking for a good faith, um, decision, uh, not decision, but a promise that that's, that's not going to happen anymore. And, uh, we have one agency that is still talking about that. Um, so.
Well, we deserve that promise.
I think we do.
And we won't settle for anything less.
Right. Well, there's no option. Our open space is protected and and there's our IBI study showed that there didn't need to be a toll road, that an arterial solution was was the way to go, and that was agreed to by Caltrans, OCTA and TCA last March of twenty twenty. So we just need to get that agreement in place. So the motion is to continue this to June first.
Second.
Okay, second by Mayor Pro Tem.
Councilmember Duncan.
I.
Councilmember Ferguson.
I.
Mayor Pro Tem James.
I.
And Mayor Ward.
I.
Carrie Swaro.
Thank you. So counsel, it is nine fifteen and we have a few left to go. I'm just trying to talk about time here. Item C was removed to the next, I'm sorry, continued to the next meeting.
However, we were going to allow the public comments on.
Oh, thank you for reminding me. Thank you. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Okay, so this is the consideration of adopting a non binding resolution of support for the right to bear arms. As you mentioned, the item was continued to May eighteenth, and I was provided direction that I will email you all of the written comments that have come in. But you indicated that you would allow the speakers who are here. So there are two. The first one is Erin.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to address counsel. I was planning on putting my three year old to bed tonight, but I haven't been to a council meeting before, and I realized that was a foolish idea. So I told my husband, put him to bed. I'll be home soon. My name is Erin. As a San Clemente taxpayer, small business owner, mom of a toddler, and representative of more than two hundred Moms Demand Action supporters in San Clemente, I'm here today to oppose item nine C, the consideration of a resolution of the support for the right to bear arms. Many people are not familiar with the terminology Second Amendment sanctuary. This term refers to a city, town or county that has adopted a resolution which rejects the enforcement of existing state and federal gun laws. It's unenforceable, it's purely symbolic, and contrary to some beliefs on this council, voting on this resolution is in fact city business. So here we are for a second city council meeting, spending taxpayers' time and money debating a symbolic statement. Here's what agenda item nine C will not accomplish. Number one, as I have stated, it's not legally binding. In the U.S., it's the court system and ultimately the U.S. Supreme Court that's the arbiter of what is lawful and what is not. Number two, it undermines existing laws, public safety, fosters distrust between law enforcement communities, and causes confusion. Number three, we expect our sheriffs and law enforcement to uphold their oaths and enforce the laws of their states. And that includes gun safety laws. As one opponent of Second Amendment sanctuaries has stated, as a sheriff, I'm not above the law or in a position to pick and choose which laws to enforce and support. Number four, resisting state and federal gun law is outside the realm of city council. And finally, but most importantly, it's a complete waste of taxpayers' money. If this agenda item passes, San Clemente will be styled with a hugely divisive label for the entire county, state and country to see. I believe in the right to bear arms, and I am the daughter of a very responsible gun owner, but I do not support San Clemente passing symbolic statements that undermines our laws and so is that in our community. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Next speaker is Fiona Carroll. Fiona? She left. Okay, so the next item is policy and procedure twelve oh one dash twelve, city council access to confidential documents. Consideration of expanding the policy to require staff members that access confidential material to acknowledge receipt of advisement language.
Okay, so this was agendized by Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes, thanks, Mayor Ward. Yes, I brought this up at a prior meeting, the last meeting, in fact, because I noticed that the policy doesn't apply to authorized staff. So this advisement language says that under acknowledgement of this advisement language that city council members have to abide by, acknowledge, to be able to get confidential documents, but it doesn't apply to authorized staff. So I don't I don't approve this. Anyway, I didn't approve this policy. I don't believe it's legal. So I don't get confidential documents. But under policy, page one, it's an easy fix if there's support for it. A second sentence, well, I'll just read it. The following advisement shall accompany the release of confidential, nonpublic records to city council members, and then just add and authorized staff, and shall be incorporated into read receipt confirmations for electronic transmittals of said records. And then leave it at that because it already says, yeah. Yep, and have staff acknowledge that as well. Because when I checked in with the city clerk, she had confirmed that staff didn't have to acknowledge the receipt of confidential documents, but city council did. And city council, it's kind of, it's kind of backwards because city council members are the lawmakers, policymakers of the city and staff who's authorized to see documents shouldn't be beneath the council.
So is there any second to looking into that? I'm not seeing any support for that motion, Laura.
No worries, Kathleen. We'll let that one fail then.
All right.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, item E.
He is a report from the interim city manager concerning the declaration of surplus property at one hundred Avenue to Presidio, and we do have at least one speaker card.
I have a point of order in regards to the city clerk. That's the city manager, not the.
Well, I call them the mayor, so.
You also called.
Instead of mister. I have.
And you called me Councilmember Nobla.
Yeah. Today is just one of those days.
We all are wearing different hats.
Yeah.
You want to take the public comment first? I know Jonathan Lightfoot is prepared to give a brief.
Great. Let's do that.
Okay, a public comment is from Bill Crutenger.
And he's waited so patiently.
Thank you, Mayor Ward, counsel. I just wanted to voice my support for item nine E, and I urge the council to invite a nonprofit affordable housing contractor to some proposals for that site. We can help meet that urgent need in our city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Madam Clerk, I don't have to close any public comments or, okay, just checking.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Ward and council members. Thanks for the opportunity to present this item. This is a property that everyone is very familiar with, the former city hall site, and council has discussed this property at length in the past, but there is a step that we have to accomplish to move forward with the disposition of this property. The first step of that is to formally declare in a public meeting this property as surplus. And then, as indicated in the staff report, I will then take the following steps as required by the Surplus Land Act to list this property appropriately and open up the the required timeline from the Surplus Land Act guidelines to to move us along in the disposition. I'm certainly available and happy to answer any questions on this topic. Thank you.
I'm not seeing any questions from the council.
Mayor Ward, I have a question, actually.
I was going to.
Jonathan, I think it's been about two years now. Some residents that live in this vicinity had contacted me and I found out, I think it was probably from Eric at the time, that there were surveyors that the city had hired to survey the land for affordable housing. So is this been a goal of the city all along or when we hired CBRE or was were we intending to have it just open to any other bidders of the property for projects outside of affordable housing?
Councilmember Ferguson, I can answer that. When we, the city, negotiated to add CBRE to represent the city with the listing of Presidio, part of that process in the preparation of listing it was what needed to be performed, which is called an ALTA. And so we did hire a surveyor to not do anything related to affordable housing, but to survey the property as the listing information for prospective proposers.
Okay, thank you. I know that the people surveying that the city hired did say they were surveying for affordable housing. So they did write us. So so maybe they just were confused at what they were doing.
That's unfortunate, but that is inaccurate if that's what they said.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Okay, so before we make the staff recommendation, I just want to say that it's very sad for me to declare our old city hall as surplus property. Have a lot of memories there, and I think a lot of our residents do also. However, I am very happy that all of our employees are in one place. We were told by our city managers that was important, and we were trying to get something going with this building and redo our city hall, but staff has done a very good job of of making me like the other city hall. I did not like it before, but I do now. And seeing everyone together, it's it's the right thing to do. So I'm just going to say I'm very sad and I'll I hate to get rid of this property, but.
It's going to be difficult for you to make the motion.
I'm not going to make the motion. I'm just calling for the motion. I just wanted to say that.
Motion, declare the property at one hundred Avenue, Avenue Presidio as surplus and direct staff to proceed with the notice and negotiation procedures prescribed in the HCD's guidelines.
Okay, there's a motion by the Mayor Pro Tem.
And it did have asbestos in it, so.
I know it does. It doesn't have anything redeeming.
We won't blame you if you abstain.
I'm not. I'm going to vote. I just didn't want to make the motion. So are you seconding that?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan. Okay, second by Councilmember Duncan.
Councilmember Duncan.
I.
Councilmember Ferguson.
I.
Counsel or Mayor Pro Tem James.
I.
And Mayor Ward.
I.
Carrie Swaro.
Love that building, asbestos and all. So, okay, it has a great ocean view. Someone's going to love it. All right.
The next item is a report from the city manager concerning the possibility of all rising sub middle of a letter of support for SB three fourteen Weiner concerning alcoholic beverages and outdoor dining.
Thank you, Clerk. I'm going to defer to Jonathan Lightfoot, our Economic Development Officer, to provide a brief presentation.
Thank you. This one can be brief as well. So in prior discussions with council and discussing the outdoor dining program that we have currently in the city that's been very popular, we've had some concern from businesses regarding the upcoming timeline and considerations that the department, the state agency, ABC, would have potentially a different timeline with the ability to continue operations in that way. And I noted previously that there was a Senate bill that discussed this topic, and council asked that I review that and bring that back. So that's what this item is. I did attach proposed letter. I'm certainly happy to make any amendments if there's a request for that and if council does want to proceed with the letter. And then there's also an attachment from the governance committee that analyzes that bill. But a quick high level is that this bill proposes a an extension of the ABC's very popular temporary catering permit to go for one year beyond the end date of when the state declares an end to the state of emergency. And so I think that the benefit of that is that it would just help local businesses in San Clemente and beyond plan out what occurs from then. And I would also comment that regardless of this bill's advancement, the city does still certainly control our own right of way. So so this would in no way dictate how long we run our program, but it does allow those restaurants to continue to serve their beverages while we do have our program in place. That's all that I have to present at this time, but I'm certainly available for any questions.
Is there any questions of staff?
I do have a question of the city manager, or maybe Mr. Lightfoot, either one. There has been some chatter about we should end our city's emergency order, emergency order. As I understand that, that would bring an immediate end to outdoor dining, and it would also bring an immediate end to our COVID funding. Is that correct, gentlemen? Is that correct?
That is correct.
And additionally, the state would still have their emergency order and the county would still have theirs.
That is correct as well.
So it would not be prudent for us to end the city's emergency order.
No, my recommendation as your city manager would be, once the county has lifted the emergency order, that would be a time for the city to reevaluate its position based on the county guidelines that come from the state.
Because we are a general law city after all.
Yep.
Okay.
I'm going to strongly support this, but I also want to make one comment. I think I'd like to ask, I guess, maybe other council members to join. There's another Senate bill, three eighty nine by Senator Dodd, who's the chair of the committee that this bill came out of, and it has to do with, it's similar, and it has to do with to go alcohol beverages. I think it's worth looking at. I know that that was very, very popular with our restaurants in the T-zone, especially when thing, you know, when they weren't able to have even outdoor dining. So I think it's something to look at maybe as well, maybe at our next meeting, if that's something that we may.
I just don't want to become Bourbon Street in New Orleans.
I agree. I don't think there's a risk of that, but I do. I do. I know from personal experience that it's it's quite nice to be able to to walk around a little bit as you're waiting for your table.
I agree.
So let's agree that that'll be agendized for a discussion at the next council.
Yeah, Senate Bill three eighty nine.
Senate Bill three eighty nine. Okay, so we made a motion, did you not?
No, I second what he said.
Okay.
But I'll move on this one to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a letter of support for SB three fourteen Weiner concerning alcohol beverages and outdoor dining.
And approve the mayor, authorize the mayor to execute a letter of support.
Second.
All right, second by Mayor Pro Tem.
Councilmember Duncan.
I.
Councilmember Ferguson.
I.
Mayor Pro Tem James.
I.
And Mayor Ward.
I.
Carrie Swaro.
Okay, we are on oral communications.
Oral communications, and we do have a couple cards, and I understand that some of the people who submitted cards for item eight A may want to speak at this time, so. First one is Michelle Brooks.
I don't see her.
Bill Crutcher.
Thank you. Again, Mayor, council, staff. I did want to want to speak on eight A. We are very blessed to live in interesting times. It's fair to say, no matter how you feel about the people involved in the events that have happened. But I don't understand why the insurance agency has rejected the coverage. I don't understand why the anti-slapp effort didn't succeed. But I also can't imagine that the lawsuit isn't completely originated from some Mayor Pro Tem Gene James's actions on council. Bieber has been a very active political player in Republican Party in the area. He's called the shots at endorsement meetings, and the allegations he makes are kind of just out there regardless and regardless of how you feel about those. That they happened when they happened. It's just abundantly clear that something Gene did or didn't do irritated Bieber. So he sued him to just try to force him to yield, and the city needs to back up its council. Thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, I see the first speaker that you called is back in the room.
Yes, Michelle Brooks.
Sorry, thank you, guys. I was I was going to call it, but I'm doing my best to stay awake. Um, thank you, guys, for allowing us back in person and being here. And then I also want to say thank you for everything you've done over the past tumultuous year. I feel like San Clemente stayed pretty relatively safe compared to a lot of other cities, and so I think in great part, that's a lot of thanks to you guys, all of our city leaders and management. So great job. So, great job, and that we don't give you guys enough kudos. I, too, want to address the lawsuit against councilmember James. I'm kind of upset as to what happened earlier. I feel like Councilmember Ferguson was given the opportunity to stay present, but to still not be a part of the vote and recuse herself, but because she chose to leave, in essence, that silenced the public because we didn't have a quorum for that discussion to happen. And therefore, anybody who was here to speak on that behalf now had to wait an extra, I don't even know, two hours because of that. And I don't think that that act was in the best interest of the city. So Councilmember Ferguson, if maybe you want to explain that later on, why you couldn't just be present so we could have had a quorum to go through with that. I'm really bothered by this lawsuit. I do think that it's frivolous. I feel that the five councilmembers have chosen a voluntary role of public service, and for that, you guys should be guaranteed protection from frivolous lawsuits. Otherwise, who in their right mind would sign up to do something like this? I urge you all to consider how you would feel in this position and what your expectation of your fellow councilmembers would be. I just think that the lawsuit is nothing more than a playground fight that got elevated, and I don't understand how it got elevated to this level. But I want to bring up two questions. One is, would this lawsuit have been raised if Councilman James was not on council or hadn't run? My second question is, would this lawsuit have been raised if Councilman James was still aligned with the accuser? I think that there's a lot more reasons behind it. But that's for a judge to decide. I just want to urge you guys to have each other's back, support each other, and especially when it comes to a lawsuit, because if we can't be protected from that, why is anybody gonna sign up for this almost basically a voluntary job as it is? And then there was something else I want to say, but I'm forgetting. I do want to bring up, for all of you to think, what has been improved in our cities since each of you took office? And in this past year, I feel like our streets are slowly turning into looking as bad as LA. And I feel like the focus needs to be back on what everybody here was elected to do, which is serve the city and their constituents who choose to live here. We don't live in LA for a reason. And I feel like the focus is on frivolous lawsuits as a distraction, and all of the bickering that was going on tonight. I mean, we had teenagers present, and this is the example we want to set. I just don't think it's a good example. Is that my timer?
Yes.
Oh, okay, but I forgot the other thing I wanted to say. But anyway, thank you for everything. Thanks for seeing us.
Next speaker is Rebecca Gensler.
First of all, I want to say thank you for picking option A. I'm not here to not do a good job. Mr. James, I'm gonna let you know, it was a COVID year, and I was out there in the off-season. Many of you don't know that. I work in the off-season, even though my contract didn't say that I had to. I wasn't out there for a few weekends because I lost my father. But that happens. You talk about Fisherman's, and that kind of upset me because I'm open when the galley's not. In the off-season, I'm out there every weekend. And in a COVID year that was so hard, I made $71,000 in two months out there. I sent you a letter telling you that. And it's, I didn't just lose my business right after I took that over from Scott. COVID hit. I had no chance to show you what I could do out there. I had no summer. So when I could open up and hit the sand and work hard, I made as much money for the city as I could. Losing my father and having both my parents in the hospital is also what COVID did to me. And family comes first, whether you own a business or not. And I just want to show you where my heart's at. Fisherman's doesn't open their galley in the off-season. I sat out there many hours, seeing when the best time is. I sat out there when school was first out on a Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Made no more than $200 because nobody's out there. I've seen it. I've experienced it. I've been there from sunrise to sunset. I've been there till 10 o'clock at night to assess when the best hours are and when you can make money. I'm a businesswoman. I've done customer service for over 40 years, and I've been in the restaurant industry. I work closely with claim jumpers and Mr. Nicolaw. So I know what it is, and I know how important it is for the city. And I just wanted to clarify that. I'm out there in the off-season. When I look at T Street and wonder, why aren't they open? It's crazy. Why wouldn't you be out there? And I'm gonna do the best job I can for myself and the city. And it is about money, but it's also about the people, and that's what this little village is about. And I've been able to do that, and it's taken a long time to put my food out there and for it to be recognized. And it is recognized, and it grows every day and every weekend. And the fishermen help. They bring a lot of business to your city. I don't know if you know that, but they do. And it's grown a lot out there, and it took Scott a lot, and I a lot of hard work to be recognized for what we are out there because we are the last little building out there. When somebody's had a meal or bought a souvenir, we are the last building that they hit. But you know what? They come back, and I've had a lot of support. And I will do the best I can for the city. I don't want to see you guys not make money. I want you to make money. I'm willing to renegotiate.
Excuse me, the three minutes is up, even though the.
Thank you.
The noise didn't, yeah.
And thank you for picking that option.
Hey, city manager.
Thank you, clerk. Really quick and kind of dovetails on your earlier discussion with our interim Public Works Director, Manuel Gomez. I know we received some calls over the weekend with bulb outs and benches still being dirty. Our sidewalk cleaning process was supposed to end early this week. However, I want to give a huge shout out to our maintenance team, specifically Randy Little and Brian Fields. They are going to initiate a deep cleaning of all the benches this week. Normally during our sidewalk cleaning, we do a wipe down and other types of stuff, but we're gonna go ahead and do a deep cleaning of all the benches. And then, as Manuel indicated earlier, we're looking at probably doing something on a more frequent basis on the T-zone going forward. And the point that he made that resonated with me was, you know, we've gotten complaints about the bulb out near South Swell, the ice cream store, and how the red tiles look stained and so forth. If we're only power washing three times a year, it's really hard to keep those stains off. But if we can look at doing a frequency of once a month, we're confident that those areas will be a lot cleaner. And so I do plan on coming back to council with some good news, while Manuel's coming together with a new plan for doing that. But I wanted to make the council aware of that. And then also, I want to be brief, I just want to say thank you again to the council for your vote of confidence with me as your new city manager. So thank you and have a good night.
City attorney.
Nothing more than that. Thank you.
Councilmembers.
Yeah, Madam, I have, I have one. In regards to SB 760, I would like for us to solicit a letter of support from Assemblywoman Lori Davies. That letter of support may be rather difficult for her, considering Jennifer Beals, her chief of staff. But she does represent this city. And I think she needs to be aware that we're not going to tolerate her pro TCA position. And I think we need to call her out for what she is. And I would like to have the council send a letter, a request from her, a letter of support for SB 60. Additionally, the same request from the Chamber of Commerce. I would like to see the Chamber of Commerce support SB 60 as well. So both of those are in one motion, and that is my motion.
And I'll amend your motion by adding a solicitation of the San Clemente Downtown Business Association for a letter of support as well.
I accept your amendment. Thank you.
I think that's a great suggestion, and I have heard a little bit from them that they're asking about that, so I appreciate that. So we'll get a letter together, asking each one.
Yeah, if I may, just because normally to give direction to bring something back at the next council.
Can we have a vote on this?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, this is time sensitive. So you made a motion, and you made a friendly suggestion in the second.
And I accept it.
Okay, this is to agendize?
No, this is just to have staff and let the mayor get a letter together to, for these different, to request that, or do you want me to reach out to them? Because I could do that, too, just time, timing wise.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd suggest, if you're gonna take that action, that the action be to ask staff to make that inquiry and report back at Jim X meeting. Would that be all right?
I'm good with that.
So that way, setting something forward and initiating the staff.
Thank you for that suggestion. Okay, so that is the second, the motion in the second.
Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem James.
Aye.
And Mayor Ward.
Aye.
Harry Sproro.
Is there any other council comments? Laura, go ahead.
I just wanted to say good luck to Eric and his sub-promotion, and I wish you all the best and success.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Ferguson. So council, we might be able to get done by 10. Would anyone like to read the second reading of 12A?
Yeah, we do have a card.
Oh, we do?
We do.
Okay.
Bill Crutcher.
All right.
Thank you. Mayor Ward, council, long time. Can amendments to things be made in a second reading with council support?
The council would have to pull this and re-agendize
Okay.
the ordinance.
Well, in hopes that that just might happen. This item includes, well, actually, it was an earlier item, the action plan that was approved. It includes a lot of nice language about the city, you know, having an inclusionary housing policy and taking certain actions to, you know, meet the goals of that policy. And the item that was passed, I think it was April 20th, does not further those goals and actually kind of takes a step backwards in a couple of ways. The bones of the, the bones of the, the bones of the ordinance are good. It's just a numbers problem. The proposed revision to section 17 dot 24 dot 1, Part C 1, A and B, the number 2 needs to be replaced with a higher number, probably between 5 and 7 and 1/2. And Part C 2, item D, the percentages there should be increased commensurately with the other change. That would kind of give us the, how the inclusionary housing policy that we need to show at least a good faith effort to do a better job meeting those requirements than the policies we've had before. Thank you.
So we have the potential tonight that we may not be able to do the second reading if council votes along the lines that we did before. We're missing a council member. Just want to point that out.
I was just going to point that out. I'll make, I'll make a motion to move this to May 17.
Madam Clerk or city attorney, can we, does that affect, it just affects when it goes into, where, you know, it goes into our amendment to our zoning. But what I'm a little concerned about is that I believe the planning commission is taking up our housing element tomorrow. And I haven't heard if there's any, Cecilia's here, I haven't heard if this, what we did affects our housing element or what the planning commission's going to be working on tomorrow. I haven't been able to talk to anyone about that.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council, Cecilia Guardo-Daly. The action the council took at the last meeting related to the inclusionary housing program does impact one of the programs in the housing element. So right now, the housing element that's been certified by HCD has a 4% inclusionary housing requirement. The action that the council took last week reduces that to 2%. And that is the change. So we will be, as part of the housing element update, revising that percentage based on council action to reflect the 2% rather than the current 4%. And, you know, it remains to be seen with HCD what they'll do with that change when we submit it.
What are the consequences of, if our housing element is not approved? Because will we get a recommendation back from HCD saying you need to bring that up to 4%? Is that a possibility? Like, we get like a change recommendation before they totally go after the city? I'm just trying to remember the process.
Yeah, so once the city council approves our housing element, which we will bring back to the city council later on this year, we will submit it to HCD, the State Department of Housing and Community Development. They may challenge some of the programs. They may challenge some of the items in our housing element. My experience with HCD on our past two housing elements is that they respond significantly to public input and concern. So to the extent that there are organizations or groups or individuals out there who might oppose certain programs in our housing element, HCD may require the city to respond. Certainly, if HCD doesn't find some component of our housing element to be consistent with state law, to the extent that they're able to certify it and find it compliant with state law, then we will be, we will have an element of our general plan that's out of compliance with state law. And that happened a couple of years ago when the emergency shelter overlay went through that process of being approved and then not approved. And as a result of that, our housing element was not in compliance.
Okay, so if tonight the council's not able, I think I heard a motion to continue it. But if we were to take this up and we couldn't, couldn't do the second reading tonight, does that affect our timing for submitting for our housing element?
No, it doesn't affect the timing. We have some time based on our schedule. The schedule that we have laid out allows us to prepare a draft. It's the draft of that housing element that'll be before the planning commission tomorrow night for review and discussion. We plan on bringing that draft housing element to the city council on May 18th, just for review and discussion and general input. And we plan on taking the housing element draft out for public review for input. Once all of that public input is received, we'll make revisions to the housing element. And then we have to put the housing element through an environmental review process. So that environmental review process will occur this summer. And once that is complete, then we'll have our environmental document and the final draft plan out for public review by the planning commission for a recommendation and city council for approval. That timing takes this housing element plan to council in the fall. So we do have some time to work with the council on this issue.
Okay, so there's time for more input at the planning commission and back to the council and public comment on that. Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right. I was just checking out logistics. So Mayor Pro Tem, you made a motion to put this off.
This item 12A to the regular city council meeting on May 17.
Mayor Ward, before we get to the moving, as a parliamentary question, I'm wondering, maybe this is a secret question. If I wanted to pull this, would it be a reconsideration vote? Is that what, so only the people that voted for it can do that?
Yes, you and I.
Okay, so I'm not able to pull it for reconsideration?
No, right?
I was on a no side.
Right. But at this point, because you did not vote for it, you could, and Cecilia, help me on that. But at this point, because you did not vote for it, you could, and Cecilia, help me on this. If we were on the, not the prevailing party, we could not vote for the second reading, which would just delay this. But we're still going through the process. I mean, it would delay this this going into changing our zoning ordinance.
Oh, if the council doesn't act on the second reading tonight.
Right.
Yeah.
We're down a council member, and two of us voted no on that ordinance and two voted for. So we're, you know, this is shades of last year. But to be consistent, I think it's fair to the council members to to stay on their position on it. I just wanted to see what the consequences were and how close we were with this housing element, because I I'm concerned about consequences. So it sounds like we have time. So we're going to ask to move this to the, did you say May 17?
May 17.
To the May 17.
I think it's 18.
May 18.
Sorry.
Councilmember Ferguson, will you second that motion?
Motion, sure, second the motion.
Okay, so second by Councilmember Ferguson.
To continue.
No.
To continue the resolution to the next meeting, yes.
Mayor Proton James.
Aye.
Mayor Ward.
I'm going to vote no. And can I ask for a point of order? Is staff vacuuming? We're having trouble hearing. There's something going on that's external that I'm listening to.
Ryan, where is that audio coming from?
Is it yours, Cecilia?
Let me.
Let her mute and see.
Yeah, I'm going to mute.
Ah, it was you. Sounded like a vacuum cleaner, but I'm not sure. Okay, so where are we? We do, we have to take a vote on whether to pass this or not? Is that where we're at? Part, you know, procedure wise?
No action. The motion failed.
Okay, so this isn't going into, there's no second reading, so it's not going to change our ordinance. So it's just stays until somebody picks it up again, right? It's off the table? It's interesting. I mean, we have a housing element that's still going forward, but, you know, this just won't go into law yet.
Yeah, it would, two or three members of the council, I think, would have, would have said it'd be brought back. And the old program that it amended stays on the books.
Right, but we have a housing element that's still going through the process, so it's still going to come back to us. So I'm wondering why we, I guess that was part of the motion for that, that we changed our ordinances. That that's what the prevailing was. This is why council members, when they they are out of town, they should zoom in so that we can continue the city business. But I certainly respect council members being able to stay on their position on this. So 12A is not, we're not going to have a second reading on that. On 12B, is any council member want to do the second reading on that? This is the structure and composition of the city commission. We needed to do this for the clerk because all of our committees were closing.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
Adopt ordinance number 1713 entitled, an ordinance of the city council, the city of San Clemente, California, number 1684, 1697, and 1710 relating to the Beaches Parks and Recreation Committee, Planning Commission, Golf Course Committee, Human Affairs Committee, Coastal Advisory Committee, and/or the Investment Advisory Committee.
I'll go ahead and second that motion.
Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Aye.
Mayor Proton James.
Aye.
And Mayor Ward.
Aye.
Carrie Sporo.
Motion for adjournment.
Would you read the adjournment for the public?
I'll read it. The next regular council meeting is scheduled to take place on May 18th, 2021. Close session items will be considered at 5:00 PM, and the regular business meeting will commence at 6:00 PM. The meeting will take place in the Community Center Auditorium located at 100 North Seville, San Clemente. But before we go any further, I guess I do have, is Zoom an option here?
We'll continue for a Zoom option as well.
Yes.
So that'll be part of my motion.
Yes, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Duncan.
Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Aye.
Proton James.
Aye.
And Mayor Ward.
Aye.
Carrie Sporo.
All right. Good night, everyone. Thank you for everyone's participation tonight.